Lake Placid Town Council, this January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. A beautiful Monday evening in the beautiful town of Lake Placid at our government center. I'd ask everybody at this time to please make sure that you remove your covers while you're in chamber. And if everybody would please rise, we have the honor tonight to have with us our chairman of our LPA, Reverend Dustin Woods from the Grace Bible Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Lord, I thank you for the gift that it is to live in a community like this, and I pray that you would set your wisdom upon our leaders, and Father, that you would govern us as we seek to govern well this real estate that you've entrusted to us. Father, we turn it all over to you, knowing you are the good and faithful guide in Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to make sure everybody has their phones either off or on vibrate. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Worley?
Here.
Councilmember Charles?
Here.
Councilmember Everhart?
Here.
Next, the approval of the consent agenda, A through E.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, A through E. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments from the podium? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Saying none, bring it back, pull to council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, well now go to number two presentations. First on the, on the agenda is Dan Hoyle and Daniel Cockrum of CWR. They're the, I believe, the project managers of the US twenty-seventh project that's going on, and if you gentlemen would like to come up, we'd appreciate it.
I'm, I'm Dan Foss. I have, so we got three Dans here, actually. I'm with Ismael Russo, and we are the construction engineers.
Say, will you check your mic?
Is it?
Yeah, talk, please talk into it.
Like, okay.
There you go.
All right, thank you, sorry. So, my name is Dan Foss. I am with Ismael Russo. We are the construction managers, the engineers that the Department of Transportation hired to manage and oversee this construction contract, and I'm the senior project engineer for this project. So, I'm here to kind of introduce the contractor, C W Roberts, and their proposal to alter some of the ways that the contract and the construction will be done. We are, we have seen this done several times. In fact, on US twenty-seven at State Road sixty, or actually Central Avenue in Lake Wales, we just finished it recently where we changed how the concrete construction was done. It was very successful. So, you know, we know this can be done, and be done well, and very successfully, so, and we're here as well to help manage it as we go through that, and we can answer any questions about anything you have as well related to the, the design of, and construction. So, with that, Dan, with C W Roberts Construction, who's the contractor for the project?
Good afternoon, early evening. Thank you for your time. I don't think we got the PowerPoint over to you. Two, three, four, five, six, eight. There you go. So, we had some handouts here. I mean, what I'll try to, I'll try to explain as best that I can. Currently, right now, the contract in the center of town consists of the intersection of twenty-seven in Dell Hall and Tower Road to become a concrete, an eleven-inch concrete roadway at the intersection. With the concrete construction, there's going to be a detour set up, and then eventually we've got to put some concrete on Dell Hall, about forty feet into the intersection, across the whole intersection. Currently, right now, the plans call for phased construction, a lane of, a lane at a time on Dell Hall. Six lanes, and then there's some other crosses, crossovers at the median. So, as the plan is approved by the department and under contract, we currently have seven different phases of weekend closures. Friday night at, I think, nine o'clock at night, and we're supposed to be done by Monday morning at six a.m. So, we will be currently, as it is contracted, would be going in there over the course of seven to nine weekends, trying to get it complete. And as you know, the Florida weather, rain is always around us, storms, so the, there are only seven phases, but that could take upwards of, you know, two or three months to actually get the right timing in to get through the weekend without getting rain. It is concrete, we're going to be in a big hole, holes fill up with water, it makes construction very, very hard. There's a lot of safety concerns. What we're proposing, and we're not changing any of the detours that are in the plans, the detours in the plans are as contracted and discussed many months ago with the department, those detour routes are not changing. What we're asking for is, is to be able to go in there over a twenty-one day period and get it done during that twenty-one day shutdown. So, we wouldn't have to worry about what Friday night and Saturday and Sunday we're going to be out there, and is it going to rain? And we're trying to get, and we would set it up to accommodate what we've discussed in-house and with some of the people, a timeframe when school is over, and we're in the middle of the summer, and people are off, out of town, basically, and not a lot of the, the area in that, going up Dell Hall is going to be in use. And we would do that in a twenty-one day period, right there, the middle of June, and be done before the Fourth of July. We're feeling that it's, it's a safety concern, not only for the workers, but the traveling public, you know, the detours every weekend, confusion, people going to the ball fields. One of the things the detour doesn't do, it doesn't affect the in and out of the strip mall or the gas station, they still have access on that side. And again, I think it, it helps with the, the safety, the first responders, you know, we're going to have to be coordinating with the first responders every weekend on what lane is open, what lane isn't open, what's the best way to access it this. If we can set up a twenty-one day closure, first responders know that for twenty-one days, this is how we're going to go to a call up in that area. We would be in contact with them throughout the whole project, you know, we would give weekly updates, because we were asking for twenty-one days. If things went well, we're, the plan is to work twenty-one, twenty-four-seven, you know, day and night with our crews, and, you know, possibly get done sooner. And as soon as we get done, we're going to open the road. We feel twenty-one days buys us some time. If we do have a rain event or two, we can recover from it. You know, one of the, one of the talking points about the seven different phases is a no-go-go scenario. At what, what time, we were telling everybody, putting it out there on the message boards that this is going to be closed, starting Friday night. Well, come Thursday, the weather changes, and a big storm front's coming across on Saturday, we cancel. That is going to cause a lot of confusion, plans like that. With the twenty-one day closure, we're in, we're out. So, what else do we want to add here? And that would also, the overall schedule of the project, you know, currently, right now, let me find the right sheet, I think it's the last page, it's, it's kind of hard, next to the last page is hard to understand, but it's not, it's just a real basic bar chart. Currently, the, the traffic control plan at the top has us doing southbound twenty-seven from January to March, northbound twenty-seven from April to June, and we'd be into that intersection from July into October. If we had got, if we can, if we can get the closure, we still keep January to March on the southbound, April to June on the northbound, and we then jump right in there in June and knock it out before the Fourth of July. This also would help with the overall completion schedule of the project. It's hard to put exactly how much time on it it would take, but it could save upwards of two months of us being in traffic out there every day, every night. Getting the job done, getting it out of here, the constructability, being able to do the, the whole project as one versus little pieces at a time, we'd have a lot more efficiency, and the constructability would be a lot more durable, probably last more, longer, and prevent, maintenance coming back, you know, in twelve to fifteen years, we might get a twenty-year lifespan out of this as it's designed. I think I've covered it all. Yeah, because currently, the way it is, we might be in traffic, we probably will be in traffic during school. The change would put us out of traffic during school, we would make sure that happens.
Mayor, may I ask?
Questions?
Yeah. So, where would the detour be?
Her plan, the detour right now, that's already approved, it takes you in between the school and the marathon, what's that side street name? I can't remember. It goes south, and it takes you down to six-twenty-one, and it takes you back around, so that's how you get to twenty-seven. So, you would shut down right there at the two stores, so you couldn't go down Dell Hall. You would stop, you would, the stores would have access, but they're, it would be closed right there at the intersection, and then you would, if you're coming towards twenty-seven, then you would turn south and, and look back around to six-twenty-one, and then you can get on twenty-seven down at six-twenty-one.
Can, can we put at least that picture or something up for the audience to see too? Because that's, I mean, I'm still struggling with exactly where you're talking, so a visual would be good.
Did we get that?
Well, can, can we bring up Google Maps or something so we can see that?
We can pull up.
Or the GIS or some things.
You turn right when you lift this, you turn left when you lift.
Interlake.
Interlake.
Yep.
Go to the stop sign.
Yep.
Bear with me.
And while you're doing that, what impact will this have on our budget? We're going to save some money?
As far as the city of Lake Placid?
Mm-hmm. Or the town, the county?
There wouldn't be an impact to the budget. There would be no impact.
No impact on the budget?
We spoke to the county as well, and, you know, they, the county engineer went through this with us, the county had no objections, and again, yeah, there would be no additional, there'd be no cost to the, to the city or the county.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out where to go on this.
So, I'm still, I'm still confused, I'm sorry. So, you're going to go, you're going to, so the northbound traffic, say, northbound's going to turn on six-twenty-one, and where in are they going to come back?
North, northbound and southbound twenty-seven never change. It's the, the, the Dell Hall east and westing. If you're trying to turn on to Dell Hall coming from the south, you've got to go down to Interlake, turn right, turn right on Eucalyptus.
Okay.
If, if you're coming north, you would be turning left onto Interlake and right onto Eucalyptus. And that would be, for the seven phases, that would be Friday night through Monday morning for seven weeks that we could do the work, but, you know, whether, it could, it could be fifteen weeks. Lord, help us with that, for sure, but. And that, and that detour was vetted with the original plans. Yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you, Eva. Thank you, staff.
So, this is Dell Hall here. Boy, you're going to challenge me today. Dell Hall here, southbound and northbound twenty-seven and Tower Road. What we're talking about is just this little area, literally right here, that we want to close and build in one shift. If we can, the phasing, as you can see, by the plans, has us doing a lane at a time, one lane, open it up Monday morning, the next Friday, a lane, open it up. The middle still's got to be built with a new island, and then you got a lane and a lane, and then you got a sliver out here, and a sliver out here, according to the plans. If we can, if we can, don't get any objections here, we could close this down for twenty-one days or less and get it, get it built, and right now, the traffic would be coming right here, turning right, and then going east-west or straight. We're over here by Tower Road, the same thing happens over here, goes around, and you come in the back way into Tower Road. There's a little bit over here that we would be doing at the same time. So, these detours will not, from the original plans, won't change. What's, what we're, what we're trying to do is to get the language to change, instead of the weekly closures, to a twenty-one day closure.
Instead of three months.
Correct.
And will people coming from the west on Dell Hall still be able to access the Publix?
Yes.
And the Wawa?
Yes.
So, it'll be, it'll be closed be af, in this case, after that?
Right. This entrance right here?
Yes.
Will always be open?
Okay.
Always, yep. You know, we're, the signs will be going to be, per the plans we have right there, they're not going to change, they're going to be set right there. And again, is it to the right, a little more, oh, yeah. Oh, sorry, this one right here.
Oh, even back there?
Yeah, way down here. It's just a, it's sixty, forty feet of this, sixty foot across, it's just this big rectangle right here. And also, when some, when this, when we're doing construction, and, and there's a side road open, where we're going to be working at some point in time, when we're first in there starting the construction, we've got to excavate out or dig out upwards of sixteen or seventeen inches?
Yeah.
And we'd have a seventeen, eighteen-inch drop-off right next to traveling, cars traveling on Dell Hall as it stands right now. If we can get this completely shut down, we isolate not only the public, but the workers, and, and again, the first responders will have, you know, a, a better plan and a better schedule to know how they can get to and from during a call.
So, so this one marathon entrance will be closed, but the other ones accessible?
Correct. They can still come in here, this one here, and this one here will be open, it'll be just this one right here.
Yeah. This is helpful, putting this up, thank you. Very helpful.
I think that sounds like a good plan.
What we would, what would CWR be looking to do is to, to get a letter from the, the city stating that there are no objections, and then I could then request a modification to the contract plans of the Department of Transportation, and we have some department people here now that work out of the Heartland Office in Sebring. They come with support, they're in favor of this. And again, this could also help speed the entire construction here up, add a little more narrative to it, you know, we're going to be milling and paving on each end of it, and be milling and paving about four miles on each end of the job the entire way, and widening, and widening and lengthening a couple of the turn lanes for, as you go out of town in both directions. And that could get us, currently, right now, it's a five-hundred-and-fifty-day project. I, I think we could, with good weather and good luck, we could save, save upwards of at least ninety days.
This chart shows you ending in July this year, I thought.
With the concrete, with just the concrete, sir. Yeah, well, the, the plan is to get out of the intersection away from town.
I just don't understand how it takes five hundred and something days to do that.
Well, there's a lot of other ditching and widening, it's, the total length of the job is eleven miles, is a little over fifty-one thousand tons of asphalt that will be going down. We're going to be fixing some cross-slope areas to help the drainage, there's some ditching, some pipes going in, and, yeah, we want to, we want to get in and get out, sir.
So, you'll be out of the intersection by July? It'll be done, done?
Probably once we clean things up, so also with this, there's some curb and gutter that we're going to be removing, and we're in the process doing that now, and changing the elevation, so we can change the, a little bit of the cross-slope right in here to get the water to drain. Right at the intersection, right here, we, we put a little island out here to make it safer for the pedestrians, where there, it's kind of wide open to traffic right there, we kind of build a little island out there and, and do that, we hope to get that done as well. I would say there'd probably be forty-five days after the road is, this area is constructed, we could get some stuff cleaned up. We've got some light poles we've got to remove and replace with, with some electrical, and then there's some work right in here on Tower Road as well.
Cool. Are you replacing the curb and gutter?
Some of it, not all of it. Most of where it's getting replaced is where the cross-slope of the road is really flat and the water sits, so we're going to remove the con, concrete curb and gutter and put new, new curb and gutter in at a, at a different elevation, so we could do some overbuild with asphalt to get a better cross-slope, to chase the water across the road. There'll be a lot of, a lot of this curb and gutter is getting removed and replaced.
Permanently, not coming back?
Not coming back. Yes, it's going to be replaced.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, it gets removed and replaced.
Okay.
Yes.
And how far did you say you're going down on Tower Street?
Tower Street.
Same as Dell Hall.
It goes, it stops right here.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that, this access always stays, and this always stays. Yeah, we got to, we got to raise the road a little bit right in here and help with this intersection for visibility, safety.
So, traffic coming out of, for instance, Dunkin' Donuts there that comes out, that little, that little road, that would have to go down, would that go down the frontage road?
Yeah, they would have to, well, they could turn right on Tower Street and, and over to, oh, I'm going to really mess up now.
Yeah, they could, I, I understand, they can go back in there. Can they turn left on Tower Street and, and go parallel to twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
What did I do?
If you click on the white box on the left-hand side, the blue will go away. There you go.
There you go.
Wow.
So, basically...
I'm sorry, there is a period of time right there during the construction on Tower Street where you were just asking about the side road right there. There is a period of time during construction, probably two days, that we were going to have to flag and maintain traffic through there, because what you have is you have an elevation change for when we install the concrete that's on twenty-seven compared to the side street, because it already comes up at an elevation. So, what you're going to end up doing is about two days of overbuild and, and building a taper going back, and it goes, it basically stops, the taper stops at the Dunkin' Donuts driveway, so we, but we will have MOT in there for a few days, building that transition to go up the tile then.
Okay.
So, we would have to maintain traffic.
And that would, that would be after the construction on Dell Hall was complete. That's when I was referring to the other question, as far as being done, done, there's some of this other, other construction.
But you would be able to come out of there and turn right on Tower Street and then find a way to go north. There's several ways that you can go north.
Correct.
What will we do for signage, like detour signage, because it's, you know, maybe the locals know one thing, but it's...
There's a very extensive signage package. Basically, every corner has a sign on each side of the road, we'll have message boards, and of course, the detour signs. We're required by contract to maintain those, and the department is very, very vigilant on making sure they stay up and can be seen, they're not, you know, graffitied or anything, and we have, we have MOT specialists here, twenty-four-seven pretty much, we, one of our superintendents lives, I don't know, twelve miles down the road in Sebring.
And it's going to be a twenty-four, seven?
Our intent, when we get in, when we get into Tower Road, we would, we would go in there with multiple crews and, and get in and get out of there, starting on a Friday night, and we would work until we're done, or the, the weather might, might shut us down. We get a, we get a bad shower, we'll probably stop and leave a couple of people to pump water and, and make sure that nothing, nothing goes wrong.
So, between ten P.M. and seven A.M., what type of noise could people expect?
Most of the time at night, the noise would be a motor grader, a loader, skid steer at night. Later on, it would be concrete trucks pouring concrete, not a lot of jackhammering going on, that type of impact tool. We would do most of the excavation, probably the first nights, would be backup alarms, about what's out there right now. We're, we've been out there at night here the last couple of weeks, and that'd be about the same type of noises you would be hearing.
And just the other comment to us is we just need to make sure we properly communicate it to the public, too, whether it's next door, however, we're going to go out and communicate multiple times, you know, that it's closed and where it's at. That, that just prevents complaints coming back with, I didn't know.
We, we have the department, as, we partner with the department well. They have a public information officer, she's here. She is very good about getting the lane closures, and we put them on the different social medias and whatnot, and she's really good about talking with everybody in the office and with the department on making sure that's up to date, and yes, we would be meeting with the first responders in person, making sure they understood where, what, how, and when, and, and how we could help, and make sure that, you know, they have clear and unfettered areas to go. And the public information officer would one hundred percent reach out through this venue and to the public on any changes and/or updates.
Thank you.
So, basically, you're, you're coming here to say there's a change, you've figured out a way to revise the schedule to expedite it, and then there are some things that are, will change accordingly, but do you have the blessing of everybody?
Yes, the Department of Transportation and their, their engineer are in favor of this. We think it will help speed the project up, keep it on budget and on time. You know, we run into these summer storms and whatnot, and, and it doesn't take a couple of weekends, and if your schedule changes, it affects your money. So, it's a, it's a joint effort to get in and get out on time and on budget, and really, what we, we come here for tonight is, is to make sure that there are no objections to changing the traffic control plan, verbiage only.
So, in the long run, it's going to be less effect on the public in general?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think it looks good to me.
Thank you.
Did we, did we need to vote on this, or just?
Or open it up for public comment?
I was going to. I was going to bring it back to council, let's, I have a motion in a second. Yes, to, to formulate the letter to send to the, send to them, so they can communicate with DOT. Not till I get a motion in a second. So, I entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve this, basically, new schedule, adjustment to the schedule, and...
The twenty-one day schedule starting in June.
The twenty-one day schedule, starting in June, for Dell Hall and Tower Street intersection.
The twenty-one day schedule starting in June, uh, for Del Hall and Tower Street intersection, and then also to, the council drafts a letter to DOT with our support.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, or the comments from the podium? All right, saying none, I'll take it to the audience. All right, none there, go ahead, come back, let's poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Dennis Murray, Town Engineer.
Yeah, all right, next we have a photo presentation that's gonna show the, uh, construction of the advanced wastewater treatment facility being installed right now.
Uh, good afternoon, my name is Dennis Murray, Town Engineer, uh, currently the advanced wastewater treatment plant is under construction, we began construction in July, we're about a hundred and ninety-six days into construction, and so far, everything is on track, and I've got a couple photos to share with the public. Uh, the left-hand side is where we started, that's an aerial of the current condition before we began construction, and on the right-hand side is the cover sheet of Pinone's, uh, design of the advanced wastewater treatment plant. Uh, on the left-hand side, you'll see the area to the north of our existing facility, it's, uh, cleared and ready for site preparation and digging of the two clarifiers, and on the right-hand side, you'll see some of that excavation being performed, uh, currently in the photo, that pit is around ninety-five to a hundred feet wide and approximately fifteen to twenty foot deep. On the left-hand side is our, um, rapid infiltration basin, that's called a RIB for short, and it's our existing condition, and on the right is kinda panning over, and you'll see where we began the, uh, the trenching and the open excavation for the two clarifiers. Uh, the left is that same trench box, this is in October, this is about a month into construction or two, on the right is one of the little mini earth movers that they've got on site, uh, they're quite interesting, they've got two of these going back and forth. As we further progress in the clarifier construction, this is the pit, a little bit more advanced in November, where they've got the, the bottom, uh, rebar being placed and some piping, uh, on the right-hand side, you'll see the contractor Crom and their very specific equipment that they've designed, uh, to do the installation of the clarifier walls. On the left-hand side is a zoomed-in photo of the rebar on that, that foundation of the floor, and on the right-hand side, you'll see some of the handholds for the electrical conduit that have been delivered on site, and those will bring some of the telecommunications throughout the, uh, the project. Here's more photos of the specialized equipment that Crom has brought on site, they're just very unique and special to the construction, uh, they act more or less like mini elevators, uh, that go up and down and around and around. Here's some more photos of them, the left-hand side and the right-hand side are the same type of equipment, but just, they do different functions, but both of them spin in circles and, uh, wrap the rebar and also, uh, they'll spray the shotcrete on the walls. And this is a good photo in December while the, uh, both clarifiers, the north and the south, uh, have got their walls pretty mu- or the, the floor's pretty much done and we're ready to go vertical. On site, you can see some of the headworks being delivered and being prepared, so we've got some very large concrete reinforced pipes, on the left-hand side, you can see them adjacent to some of the equipment being used, and on the right, you can see a person working on them for a sense of scale, so, they're about seventy-two inches or so, very large. Uh, this was a cool photo I took, uh, during a construction, uh, concrete pour, uh, you can see the rainbows going into the ready-mix truck and, uh, big American flags, so I liked that a whole lot. Uh, this is a good shot, kinda north and south, as we begin the vertical wall, uh, construction, and you can see that process, they, they frame it with, uh, uh, just a lot of framing material, and you'll see more of that, it starts out with wood and then kinda goes into a steel frame. This is the concrete, uh, encased electrical conduit, so this is the electrical bank that's, uh, that's ran through to each of the handholds that we saw earlier, and, uh, they'll be backfilled with concrete, so to avoid any type of, uh, digging in the area, we don't want any, anybody to be able to, uh, disrupt those communications. Uh, there's the vertical walls being erected, uh, previously, you can kinda see like the stilt and stick, and then now we've got some steel, uh, to the south clarifier, the north, um, beginning that process. In these photos, you can see the steel reinforced rebar being wrapped around the clarifiers on the south, you can see where we began to mobilize the specialized equipment, um, and, uh, hopefully I've got a video to just kinda show these things in action, um, this is further into December, just getting further in construction where the walls are all vertical, and now they're being wrapped and being prepped for concrete. This is further in construction, showing some of the specialized equipment being further mobilized and in place, on the left is the south clarifier, on the right is the north, everything is further, uh, finalizing the, the, the wall construction. And then this is a short video, uh, showing them in action. Yep, so that's a very dry mix, similar to a pool, walls, shotcrete, and specialized equipment goes up and down like an elevator, where the operators, um, are on the front and back and the middle of the vehicle, and then you've got two, uh, operators on the, uh, manning the concrete gun, for lack of a better term. Any questions?
Thank you, very informative to me. Good progress.
Thank you. Any questions, Avi, while he's here? Is it, is it possible for our citizens to go down and look at it if they, if they would like?
They can't get on the construction site, you'd have to schedule a day with the contractor and pretty much sit down work, there's constantly big equipment moving back and forth across the site, so you wouldn't be able to, to see what was going on, I mean, to get onto the site, you'd have to be, you gotta be very careful about that, there's a lot of heavy equipment going back and forth, loaders and cranes and concrete trucks, and so there's thirty or forty people working there on any given day.
We would need proper personal protection equipment and, you know, it, it's an active construction site, but...
What about sharing these pictures and the video in some way?
Our intent is to put it on the Nextdoor app and also on the website, and then, um, the chief can, will put it on his Facebook page.
That would probably be more efficient than asking people, inviting people down to a construction site, that makes me a little nervous.
Thank you, he really does show people, and pictures are worth a thousand words, you can sit here and explain that all day, but seeing a picture is worth everything, so thank you very much.
Especially the picture over time, that really shows the progress, and I like each month, right, something different.
I have just a quick question about, um, the Camp and Conference Center, where are we at with, uh, where are they at with, with their process?
Camp and Conference Center on the wastewater line will be the, their pressure testing, the force mains, they've been doing that for the last couple of days, so that piece of it'll be complete. The lift station will be by next Friday, a hundred percent complete, however, um, Duke is twelve weeks out for permanent power, so it is the only, it'll be the only remaining thing after Friday is to have wait on Duke for the design and getting their schedule for their poles and the line to come across, so, um, actually having some survey work done tomorrow so that, because that line that comes across there is on private, entirely on private property, and then there's a distance there across private property, but we can get onto the Camp and Conference Center property, it's a little bit further run, stay on their property to bring the service in, then we're not dealing with other easements and multiple entities, but they're, they're twelve weeks out, and that will complete the project.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I wasn't given any, but at, at this time, if the public has anything they would like to bring before council, this is your time to be able to get up and, and speak. Okay, saying none, we'll go on to our public hearings. Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash O two, and ordinance, the town of Lake Placid, Florida, modifying the five-year capital improvement schedule of the town of Lake Placid, twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Dana Riddell, Town Planner for the Record, as mentioned, this item is to discuss and vote for first reading on the five-year capital improvement schedule for the town of Lake Placid, what the five-year capital improvement schedule does, or what this ordinance will do, will modify our five-year capital improvement schedule, which is something that we go through every year on an annual basis, the capital improvement schedule is located inside the capital improvement element of the town's comprehensive plan, but this is not considered pursuant to Florida statute as a full-blown comprehensive plan amendment, this is an annual update that we do every year to our comprehensive plan. The reason we do this is to satisfy Florida statute requirements for review of the capital improvement schedule, and it helps us to identify funding, timing, and priority for listed projects, and ensures adopted level of services are achieved slash maintained. Usually, and it is, adopted by reference includes the, um, Highlands County five-year work plan, they will not have their plan ready until the end of January, but the capital improvement schedule is, uh, requires, it's done by ordinance, requires two readings, so by the time we come back for second reading, we'll have that plan av- available for our review. I have the recommended motion options available on the screen, myself and staff are available for any questions.
I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five-O-two-LPTC dot twenty-five dot zero-zero-two-CIS comma, modifying the five-year capital improvement schedule of the town of Lake Placid twenty-thirty comprehensive plan and mi- and forward the adopting ordinance to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for notification. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion from the podium?
I, I have a number of questions that I wanted to, and comments, um, is, is this due, I mean, the timing of this, I would've thought, would've been closer to the budget, so this kinda hit me cold, um, but that's fine, so can I assume properly that the twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year is exactly, I'll call that year one of this five-year plan, is it the same that we approved, that we just approved for the budget? Everything that we just approved for the budget for capital spending for twenty-four, twenty-five is column number one, the first year in this?
So just to start by addressing the timing issue, unfortunately, the capital improvement schedule is handled on a calendar year basis, and the budget cycle is handled through a fiscal year, so unfortunately, the timing doesn't quite line up, and because of the way that our comprehensive plan requires us to also adopt the school board's, uh, five-year work plan, that's why it has to come before council, as soon as this new calendar year begins, which is why we're here in January. Is it exactly the same? I know that we've added a police car, because since the budget was approved, there, the, one of the police cars was destroyed, and next year, we're gonna have to purchase two. Would any other directors like to provide input on whether or not there were any changes from the time of budget to the time of capital improvement plan?
Just to clarify, the destroyed police car is not gonna be replaced next year, it'll be replaced this year, and it isn't being paid for with the funds coming from the insurance company, so it does not change the budget for the police car, next year's budget.
Okay, thank you, so it's, it's been included as part of the comprehen- I'm sorry, the, um, capital improvement plan, but as the chief noted, it will not impact our budget.
But he's saying the insurance company's gonna then...
The capital improvement plan identifies all major purchases we're making regardless of who's paying for it.
So then the source of the fund would show insurance or something on, 'cause it also shows where the source of each of the funds for each of these items is coming from.
Rachel, would you consider insurance a viable finance category for the capital improvement plan?
But the way it's written, it, not showing insurance implies it's coming out of taxes.
Right, so if it's not covered, say insurance doesn't cover it, then it would be coming out of our, like, I think there's like a contingency plan element to it, but if a developer was going to install a new lift station, and we added it to the capital improvement plan, the funding source would either be the general fund or the utility fund, my understanding is because that's where, if there was a default on the, the outside funding source, that's where it would come from.
Similar to if we say in a grant, we don't get the grant, we're putting something on here, we say grant, we don't get the grant, then we deal with going forward or not based on the funding.
We have used grants before as a funding category?
Yeah, yeah, but we have it listed on here, FERDAP grant and that, so my, my, I think what you're explaining is it's the same thing, got a police car we need to buy, we anticipate getting reimbursed from the insurance company, we have to put it on here because it's a capital need we have, same with the playground that we're gonna get FERDAP, but if we don't get the FERDAP, then we deal with it a different way. Or we do a, we have to do a, a budget amendment at a meeting.
Correct, um, so I think, let me think of it, oh, there she goes.
So when the, the insurance company reimburses for a vehicle, it's almost like on a book value, it's not a replacement value, so you can't use that money as for the reimbursement to say it's gonna be the total fund source for that vehicle.
So we anticipate paying for the vehicle and being reimbursed, is that right, Rachel?
Or he can probably say that, um, he gonna not buy something else in his budget to compensate for the difference, so, that's how he'll say it in the past.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we'll deal with that funding at that point in time, with what the recommendation is.
That's correct, he'll bring it back to you as a budget amendment or whatever matter, however he kinda fund that, the rest of the vehicle.
Uh, we did quite a bit, a bit of extensive research into how we would, uh, be able to replace the vehicle this year, coming in under what we are receiving from the insurance company, it is not paying a total replacement cost, which was twenty-two thousand, I believe, is what they agreed to pay, I've actually, uh, discovered other ways to purchase the vehicle, um... We'll be paying 17,000 for a new vehicle this year on a lease, for a three-year lease. We have a $1 buyout of the lease, if at the end of this year we do not want to keep the vehicle, we can return it for $1. We don't lose anything, but we do have the use of the vehicle. If we continue for the next three years, we would have to pay 17,000 each year for that vehicle, and at the end of it, it would be paid for fully, and be our vehicle.
So if we're leasing, then we should remove it from the capital improvement plan?
That one vehicle, yes, it should not be in the capital improvement, I don't know who put it in there.
Okay. All right, so we can, if council wishes to remove that number from the capital improvement plan, that would be incorporated as part of the motion. So I think...
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm, I'm confused, maybe I was asleep, but when did the 1.5 million Public Works complex come about?
And what is it?
I'll address that. So that was, the Public Works complex is something that we put in, I, I put in actually a year ago, so it was in last year's capital improvement element, and this year's capital improvement element, again. As the utility expands, and it's partly to put it on your radar, it's our planning from a staff perspective that as the utility grows, we're, we're already tied on space, and Public Works doesn't have enough space, and Utilities doesn't have, have enough space. So we put it on there, we don't have a funding source yet, it's in the fifth year out, the fourth year out. So, but that's, we have to plan for a, we're not going to have enough space, we have to start planning for a public utility complex. If the fire department actually moves out of the, build, they build their fire department, they move out of the existing fire department, then Public Works could move into that facility, which would leave some of the space issues, but it needs to be on the council's radar, and like I said, it was in last year's and it's on this year's, that you are going to need to, you're not going to have enough space for, in the existing complex. So he has, Public Works has four bays, Utilities has two bays, but as we continue to expand the utility through these grants and septic sewer projects, you're going to need additional space. We already have most of our equipment sitting outside, as it stands today.
Well, okay, but wouldn't that come out of the utility budget?
You could fund part of the buyout out of the utility budget as opposed to the infrastructure, but Public Works typically is out of the infrastructure budget. If we're taking over part of that building, and I don't know who built it, we didn't get into that level of, it's a very rough estimate because it's out down the road several years, as far as a project before, we're going to hire an engineer, design anything, get costs and that kind of stuff, so part of the buyout would come out of the utility budget, but that's only going to be part of what he needs, he doesn't have enough space today. And so if you're going to build a facility, I'm assuming that you would build one large enough to house his entire department.
I, I don't see this on the CIP from prior years, so for me, I'd like to know a little more exactly what it is, you know, the timing of it, because this is saying it, 1.5 million coming from the general fund, that concerns me, that's like a big chunk of, you know, something I'm, I'm not that familiar with, so, and again, if we're saying it's for Utilities, I agree, it should come from, is there a specific enterprise or combination of enterprises, sanitation, utilities, wastewater, that it should come from, so my interest would be knowing more specifically about this before I can support, and I know we've got two readings here, but, you know, I'd like to know a little more about, you know, how much space, 1.5 is a big, is a big number, what is it for, and what will happen to the old space, so, and then I do like the idea is if, and I think Councilwoman Worley had brought that up in the past, of when the fire department is built, we have a facility that we need to make a decision what to do with, and, and so, you know, to the question, could that fit, you know, the vehicle, so that's, that's my comment on that one.
And is there anything, a line item on here for a fire department?
No, because that's handled by Highlands County, we don't have a fire department that we pay for with our town funds.
Okay, so then to be clear to everybody else, if when a fire department is built, nothing comes out of town money?
Correct. That I'm aware, like, I mean, there could be like a land deal in kind, or...
We have in the past donated land that would, that we've tried to give them to go ahead and move forward, it's given back, we've donated the same, same land twice, given back twice. Also, House Compton donated some land, and it wasn't big enough, or it didn't work, so that was given back as well. No, we need the county to move forward so we can get our facility back. It works perfect for what we need. It has storage, it has, they've actually taken very good care of it, I say the county has taken very good care of it, the facility, facility's been kept up, they use hurricane funds to, to enhance it inside, it doesn't look much on the outside, I'm telling you, it's been, been taken care of, but we need to get that done, and I think our town administrator's been working on that. I know that there's been pressure at the county commission, but we just, they, they say there's not land, but anyway, yeah, maybe if we approve it, and maybe between now and then, we'll have more information on that next month.
Can I make a comment? If everything goes as planned, the county is, has been invited to come and present at the next council meeting for February, so that they can discuss the fire department plans. If you did not attend the county commission, I mean, I'm sorry, not the county commission, but state appropriations meeting, that went before the board there, and so it's already been presented for state appropriations, they will come back and be able to provide more in-depth conversations about what has held up the process, what, where the location of the land will be, and fill in all of the gaps. So I've asked the county administrator, the assistant county administrator, who is also in dual role for the county engineer, and also the fire chief will, will come as well.
Being as positive as I possibly can with reference to the fire station, I really believe that we might get a police station built before the fire station, and we know how long it has taken us to try to build a police station, we're still not even out for bid for a police station because of all the hoops that we had to jump through. If the fire department has to jump through equivalent hoops, we are looking at a fire department about 2028 or 2029. So I think we need to be realistic in how soon that you might get that building back. I don't think it's soon.
Yeah, and I think we also need to look at, when they come next month, ask them, because I don't think it's a, it's not being utilized as a full-force fire station, maybe there could be a cooperative use until we could get back the full facility, because it's not being, as far as I can see, and as far as I know, it's not being really used as a full-force, it's still being used as a backup facility, and it's not being utilized as a full-force fire department, so maybe we could do joint facilities of it and to get through this gap. I don't know, that's, that's a question for the county.
Alan, we're already joint using that, correct? It's already in joint use? And just to, so that everyone is aware, the, the fire department is ran by volunteers only, and at this time, there are only two volunteer firefighters who volunteer at our location in Lake Placid, that's it. So everyone else is coming in from the surrounding area in Highlands County, from other fire departments to take care of our town. Just to put that on record, and again, they will discuss that more in depth, so Councilwoman Worley is correct, but it's because we do not have the staff who are willingly volunteering, so to speak, I should say volunteers, to man the department here, or the station. Alan, would you mind, because it is already currently being joint used?
You're, you're referring to our current facility being joint use?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, oh, the fire department? The fire department, sorry, I misunderstood, the fire department is not joint, joint use with us.
But we're, we're not storing anything there now? I thought we had bays there?
No.
We're not currently using it?
No.
Okay, I see, corrected.
So if I may, an item that's going to come up a little bit further is going to be the capital financial strategy. That topic is going to come up for discussion, because that only requires one reading, not two, but we're bringing it today just for discussion in case there's any changes when we come back, which after today, there will be changes. The capital improvement plan is for the next five years, the capital financial strategy is for the next 10 years. Years one through five of the capital improvement schedule must be financially feasible. Purchases in years six through 10 could be more of a wish list. So if it is the desire of council to remove it from the capital improvement schedule, and instead add it to the capital financial strategy for further down the road when we have more clarification on when that fire department will be built, that is something we can do.
The fire department will be built what?
I'm, I'm sorry?
The it you're talking about is the fire department, and the fire department will be built by when?
Well, it's the public wor, I'm sorry, it's the Public Works building, which the reason I thought that, that was up for discussion is because our plan, I think our plan was to put our things into the fire station once it got built, but since it's not getting built, is the idea that we would do the Public Works complex instead?
We would only be able to store a small amount of our equipment if we were to take that building back over, and then we would have to still be split between two facilities. Not only is it an issue with what we have stored in the building, all the way around the building, it's also an issue with all of our large vehicles, with four garbage trucks and five garbage trucks and three brush trucks, everything's just kind of lined up, so if you need the truck in the back, you've already got to pull two more out of your way, and we need a wash station built for those garbage trucks, which was never created at our current facility. We have more than 50 dumpsters on site that are lining the entire roadway going out to the wastewater treatment plant. We need, we've already completely outgrown what we have, and we need more overhead storage, something to store all of our barricades in, all of our skid steer, everything that sits out in the sun and just kind of gets deteriorated by the weather currently.
Okay, so the fire station's definitely out, we can't fit anything in there, so the question would be then, is the council interested in keeping the Public Works complex in this five-year schedule, or is it a longer-term project out into the future?
I personally would like to know more about it. Like I said, this is the first time I've heard about it, and that's very helpful, what you're describing, the equipment, and I mean, is it, we really have to go, these would be the questions, do we have to go build a new one, or can we expand, you know, to, you know, hold some of the equipment that you have, or is it because the wastewater treatment plant is encroaching on, and now you need all that space, so that needs to be torn down? So it's just, it's hitting me cold on, we want to spend 1.5 million for a complex when I'm not certain on the current complex, let alone the future. And I agree, some of the stuff that you're talking about, I wouldn't want right downtown on the corner that we could all see, so that's not optics best to be stored inside the town, unless it was all enclosed. So for, to me, I mean, I would like to put this one on hold, because we can revise this, right? Mid-year, half-year, we have to do this once a year, so we could revise this next year and add it to, it's not for an out year right now anyways, right, it's, it's showing it will be in... Yeah, 26, 27. So we can come back a year from now, when we're doing the next five-year, and now we've had education and information on what it is, what we want to do, maybe more estimates even, and then we can add it to next year's for whichever out year we want, is that correct?
That is correct, just keep in mind that if some type, some type of grant opportunity arises between now and then, if you all have this conversation next month and decide that a Public Works complex is a good idea, and we don't have it as part of our capital improvement plan, it could affect our ability to get grants if something comes up in the near future.
Or we have a special meeting, like they did with the pickleball, mid-year, change the capital improvement plan, put pickleball on it, move forward, right? So we can always have special meetings to adjust it if something comes up.
Certainly.
I think it makes more logical sense to keep it where it is in 26, 27. And I, I frankly think if we move it, it'll be moved out even farther, but I think it's good where it is at 26, 27.
And it was the first five years that had to be financially feasible?
Correct.
But right now, is this financially feasible in 26, 27?
Rachel, would you like to speak to that, please?
I would say no, because right now, they, the capital fund is right now wrapped up in other projects, so right now, the operating for Utilities is kind of holding the wastewater, some of the funds is there, so I would say no, not right now.
So then actually it should not be in the first five years, because it is not financially feasible?
So it was, it should be moved out to year six?
Well, Rachel says it's not feasible for 26, 27. Rachel, do you find it financially feasible anytime in the next five years?
I would say like Ms. Councilman Hail, Nell said, 26, 27, it should be okay by then, because the sort of septic project is finished when? 2026. So then those funds will be kind of released, so that we can, that we can be spent then.
Which funds, Rachel?
So some of the capital fund is in the wastewater project right now, so once those get reimbursed from the, the grant or what have you, then those funds will be okay, then they put those back into the capital account. So 26, 27, those funds should be available.
So, so this would be coming from the Utilities Fund then, reserve?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this says general fund. Schedule says general fund, so that needs to be changed.
So what the project is for billing that complex, it also involves Public Works, which is part of general, so there'll be some fund that'll come from the general side as well as Utility side.
You'd bill, bill it back to them, so we would need to know what that prorate amount is.
Yeah.
Okay, then, then I must have misheard you, because I thought at first you said it was not financially feasible in the first five years, and now you're saying it is financially?
2026, what part of that in, Dana? The 2026, that's how many years out? I mean, well...
Like one.
Because it, the wastewater is 2026, so 27, 28.
So 27, 28 might be more feasible.
Yeah, not guaranteed, but...
So if we moved it to 27, 28, and, and everything fell into place, it, we could move it back up at that point, we could move it to 26, 27 if we had the funds available?
Right, but then the wastewater project in at 2026?
Right, right.
So it's kind of, kind of hard to say right now.
Yes, I, I understand it, and, and the hardest part to say is what will the fire department do between, you know, to 26, 27, they're more like 27, 28, so. I'd say we move it to 27, 28, and give us a flexibility to move it back to 26, 27, if the stars align and the fire department gets its act together.
That would be move it to year three?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Or move it to year four, I mean, so we're staying, still keep it within the five-year, it's just where should we place it? And again, I don't think it should come from general fund, 1.5 million's a lot to plan for, if there's a reserve that already has that money set aside, that's a whole different discussion.
I think it would just be a transfer from that into the general.
So, so you're saying, just to clarify, that you believe that 1.5 million, or something a little less, because you want to, we, we would need to budget for you, Public Works to be using some of that facility, but the bulk of it, you do have money that will be freed up from Utilities in the 2026 year?
Yes.
So conclusion is we move it, move the date, and it, and as far as the source of funds, break it out between general fund and Utility Fund.
Correct.
Okay, I'm in my emotion to say that.
Yeah, I've got a few more questions of, on some other things I think that might be missing.
Yeah, and I just, I guess, yeah, just in the middle of the...
Yeah, and I just, I guess, yeah, just in the middle of this. So if we, I always, I mean, this is first I heard, the facility's not going to be adequate to take over to house the new utility expansion. So if we're not going to use it for, you don't want it there because you might see, you know, we could put another building, but then we have to, you know, finish it with stucco in accordance with the town ordinances. So let's say it's not feasible, then what we do is we sell that property. If it's not usable for the utility, we sell it and we take that money to help fund. I would say we don't have any other use for it right now. So that would, I mean, do you all agree we would, we would sell that property?
Yeah, sure.
And you could open up the front of that building and make it nice with a showroom in front. There's just no parking on that side of the street. So anyway, I'm just saying, so we still need to keep our eye on the ball with that property. And we need, still need the property back so we can still fund our growing utility apartment.
Right.
Or whatever, whatever else we decide to spend on it.
Right. That's the discussion for the future on that one.
Yeah.
There's a street sweeper to purchase in here. And I thought we previously, when we did the budget meetings, we discussed just hiring the company to come in a few times a year that I think Allen had said they pay $800, $8,000, I think was it? Eight hundred, $800 to come sweep the streets. So to purchase one for 200,000, that's something like a 20, 30-year payback. I mean, I'm just saying if we sweep the streets five times a year, right? And let's say it's a thousand dollars. So $5,000 a year, it's going to be a long time before we get a return on a $200,000-owned street sweeper. So to me, I'd like, I was surprised to see this on here because I thought we talked about we'll just use the company to come in and sweep the streets versus own capital equipment, which in so many years is going to break down. We're going to have to replace it anyways. So where I was at, and I don't know what anybody else has any other comments, is to pull that one out. I don't think we need to purchase and own a street sweeper.
We've never had the streets swept before. I would like that seen done, but we've never had before.
Yeah, I agree with you, Colleen. After the meeting that we had with CRA and Keep Like Plus Beautiful, I think it was, it was decided to do that on a contractual basis. But if you look at that street sweeper, there's, it's on there as, as a project cost, but there's no money. It's not allocated in any of those, in any of those years that I see, unless it's, unless it's over on the side. I haven't got the table.
Yeah, it's out in the last year, 28, 29. $200,000 to buy a street sweeper.
Okay, so it's way out in 28, 29?
Allen had, well, so after the Christmas parade and, and just recently, you had it done, right? How much? So I mean, to do the, you know, the small downtown area, I just think spending $200,000 of taxpayer money to own a piece of equipment that we can hire a company to come when we need the streets swept, can't say that, isn't the best. Yeah, that's not the best decision we should make.
Allen, were you planning on only using the street sweeper two times a year?
Do you, do you mean the company that we hire or if we were to own one?
If you were to own one, what would your plan have been with that?
Depends on the size of the one we had and if we could do it on nights or maybe announce that the roads needed to be cleared those nights. I think a more feasible thing would be get not a giant street sweeper like you see in the cities or like the one we hire that comes out. If they make a smaller model that would fit in the back of a pickup truck, like the one that you see, I believe that does Publix parking lot, that might be something and it might be significantly less money. Or we could do like we used to do 15 years ago and just have a couple of our guys go down every morning with push brooms and snow shovels and a gator.
But it's really just the public events that cause a big issue? Is there other times of the year you wanted to use it or no?
Not for events. It's usually just after the Christmas parade because of all the candy wrappers and everything that's thrown out into the roadway.
But, but one of my complaints is when the oak leaves fall and they're piled up by the curb in between events, that does not look good. So we need more than just after events.
Which is why I was saying, even if we did it six times a year, right? And round it up to a thousand dollars, that's $6,000 a year in the budget. Quite a few years before you get a return on a $200,000 street sweeper. So I, I think having it done more often is probably a good thing. I mean, it is a good thing. And that would be part of the operating budget. That's just my...
Allen has indicated he's okay with removing that from the capital improvement schedule.
Then, I was wondering where trails are on here. You know, we talk about the trails. We've purchased property to build trails. So where do we have capital improvement for trails?
We don't currently have any imminent plans for trail development. But that's something that we've been meeting on and discussing. We had a meeting just this morning to discuss the moment we start planning these trails with the Heartland Regional Training, Transportation Planning Organization. And if we get accepted, it will be five years out. That's the soonest that they could get us on a plan if we get accepted onto the plan. So with that in mind, with new administration and with the current planning staff we have, that's something we will pursue. But we haven't identified the exact projects yet, but we will move forward with that in the future.
And then just to have a couple more is, so for playground equipment, we have $200,000. Would that include, I mean, people are very interested when we had our, you know, brainstorming session, a splash pad, a dog park. So would that be incorporated in that or is that just something that we just need to, to add on? And, and if we had a workshop, these would have probably been the time I would have thrown these things out. But since we're going forward, it's, it's necessary to throw some of these things that we've had the discussion that maybe we just overlooked plopping them on the spreadsheet.
Understood. I believe Harry and Allen deal with the playgrounds. Do either of you have thoughts on your $200,000 allocation for playground equipment?
I see playground equipment, $200,000, three different years.
Right, so I'm, I'm wondering, is that just playground? Is that splash pad? Is that dog parks? It's other, of the recreational activity that when we had our budget workshops that had came up?
That would strictly be to replace outdated playground equipment that's currently at our parks.
So that doesn't include like splash pad? That's not playground equipment?
That, that's, that's a separate, kind of separate project.
So we should probably add a line for splash pad and splash pad slash dog park? Because I know a lot of people are interested in a designated dog park area.
And what about the redoing the Boy Scout Building? Is that in here somewhere?
That's, was the CRA. That is CRA. Yeah, because the CRA, we did the five-year plan. That's why we kind of hashed that out a little more. And then the last one I had on here, and maybe this is beyond five years, but, and, and so if not next year when we do this, I'll come back, is a fishing pier at Lake June Park.
So that's not on here? You're adding that?
It's not on here. Right, so these, so things that we had discussed during the budget meeting, I was just, I took my notes and I said, okay, if we're doing the five-year plan, we should be having them somewhere in the out years.
But I'm not so sure that the things that you're saying that are not on here might not, I may not say this correctly, maybe those things are in the CRA plan.
But Lake June Park is not CRA district.
That's true, you're right, okay.
And I don't think we had splash pad and dog park in the CRA. So I kind of took a look, what have we done with the CRA? Okay, what's, do we need to do here? So those would be addition. And then the last one is... Just the amount on the pickleball courts, I think it's too low, right? So the pickleball courts, you have 250 for RPAC and 100,000 from the general fund, so 350 in total. But the pickleball grant is 407,000.
There's, louder years, next year over is another 350. Go the next year, say, the rest of it.
Oh, it's...
We got 300,000 from RPAC, 200,000 in the town general fund, and 200,000 from FERDAP.
How much is total?
Uh, two, four, six, 700, $700,000.
I think it's 700,000 total, isn't it? One, two, three, four, five.
So you're doing it out in two years?
Yeah.
And the 700,000 is based on the parking plan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, those are my comments of things that I think might be missing and maybe something that's there that, and I guess we just discussed on the 1.5 million, maybe push it out a couple of years.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody had any additional things.
Yeah, and push it out and break out the source of funding.
Yes, change it to the source of funding.
For which one?
For the 1.5 complex.
Okay. So we're going to take $200,000 out for the street sweeper? And we're going to take the 1.5 and move it out to, what did we say, 27, 28? What did we say?
Yes, 27, 28.
And, and we're going to change the source of that funding because it's going to have to do with what we're going to get paid back that will, that will reimburse that, if you will. Okay.
And, and we should add some money in for splash pad, dog park? I think, I think that's what the public has asked for under recreation.
I'm just not hearing that same thing from the public. But if you want to put it in there, I won't, I won't fight you on it. I'm just not hearing the same public that you are, but whatever.
I had a question about when we get to the dugouts. That with the people that did the estimate for the dugout so that we could approve that tonight, they had a whole list of other things that needed to be done. So I can't find it in my paperwork right now. But I'm just saying, do we need to put that in here and do it like next year? Put it in a more recent, do we need to do that? I mean, the dugouts are one portion of their bid, but they had a lot of other issues in that, in that item on the agenda to be repaired. I don't remember the amount. I want to say it's 148,000. But we do need to keep up our facility. So if that needs to be in here, then we need to put it in here.
I don't think upkeep of the facilities is in the capital improvement budget. That's in the town budget, not in the capital improvement budget. Maintenance, okay? If we're going to build something new, then that would be a capital improvement budget. But if we're simply doing maintenance, and I don't mean to, you know, to belittle that in any way, but I just think it's a wrong, that's a wrong venue.
I just want to make sure we get whatever we need for our ball field in there because we've had complaints about that.
Harry, are there any upcoming large purchases you could think of in the next five years for the ball fields?
The only thing that I knew that was on there was for the, the...
Can't hear you. Louder, Harry, please. It's closer to your mouth.
The only thing that I knew that was on there for large purchases was the playgrounds.
Do you feel like you need anything for the ball fields? New dugouts?
We need bleachers and stuff like that replaced.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
In some of our conversations, because we have our directors meeting every week, we've been discussing how we're getting ready to, as soon as you finish budget, you finalize, you technically move right into budget again. So beginning in February, we, February, March, we should start having a schedule of budget workshops that should encompass any of the capital improvement items that they would put on the capital improvement plan. So my goal is to be able to get with our finance director and go ahead and build that out. So in February, you will get the schedule that we will need to vote on. And so ideally, the way that it would work is either two weeks before a council or two weeks after, we would have a budget workshop. And then we would also have our, our regular council meeting. It is a lot, however, when you do it based off of the schedule that is set forth for government municipalities, we hit this ahead of time instead of waiting until June and you not being able to have the conversations with staff and to discuss it. Even though there is a different timeframe for us to be able to adopt the capital improvement plan, you would still have all of the information you need where, where you're not feeling like you don't have all the pieces to the puzzle. So I just wanted to put that out there, that if we, if you know that we have this in the forthcoming future, that it may be able to alleviate so much of it here now because the staff still need to go through some additional training so that they understand the full process of how a capital improvement plan works and how it aligns with their budget.
So we're taking $200,000 out for the street sweeper. Would it, would it suffice for you to put that $200,000 into your splash pad and whatever else?
I think it would suffice for the public.
Okay.
Because that's what we've been told and they even came to the meetings and said they want a splash pad.
I heard them.
And then there's a different demographics that really would like a dog park.
A dog park and a splash pad, okay. For, for some of the public that came to the meeting.
Yeah, and I, I concur.
And that we knocked on doors and they told us.
I concur. A lot of doors we knocked on and a lot of people had the same theme over and over again.
What year would you like to put that under?
What's that?
The splash pad, splash pad, dog park and fishing pier, if we're adding the fishing pier. What year in the five-year capital improvement plan are you interested in putting that in?
Splash pad and dog park in year two, so next year.
If I may, I was hoping to have time to look into researching different grants we get for a large-scale play structure, not, not the ones you get from Game Time, but a, a very large one like they have, what is that, Dale Heffernan, Elfinger, the one in Okeechobee. There's very large structures that we can, that we can get that creates just a larger environment, not just one little playset. It would be an inclusive park and hopefully add a large-scale splash park there as well. I didn't want to spend a small amount of money and have a small splash pad that nobody's happy with. I would like to chance to find funding for something more large-scale.
So maybe in three years, you're saying, so that we could take a year to get a really good grant application in and make maybe even more than one application if necessary?
Or, or can we expand the 200,000 playground for next year to make it say playground splash pad, you know, kind of, because that's what you're saying. It's like a combined playground and splash pad. So I mean, I'm fine with expanding this, adding some money to the 200,000. You've got, you don't have it up, but the, you've got 200,000 for playground equipment in, with FERDAP. And I mean, I agree, there's other grants that are available that we can go after. So you have 200,000 in year two, year three, and then year five. So let's bump that up, you know, to 300 for year two and three, which is the street sweeper. And, and then just change it from, to, from playground to playground splash pad, dog park.
May I make a comment?
Please.
I've worked on a splash pad two years ago and we spent over 160,000. So I'm just putting that out there, that it was two years ago and they were very small structures. So as Allen is saying, when I say small, I'm talking about like this big. There, there's a lot of work that's involved in that. And with the inflation of prices, it will definitely be more than 160, just to give you perspective.
If we put this in here, at least it's something.
Right.
And it gives us, it gives us a chance.
Yeah.
So to confirm, that's $300,000 in two years?
In two years.
Thank you.
Thank you to the street sweeper.
Yeah, right.
Fishing pier? Last topic of conversation.
We can push that into, we have a discussion for the budget and then we'll have better ideas of even what cost.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Well, we're going to revise this every year, so...
That, that's what I'm saying.
Also, I just want to point out, and I know we've got that three acres over there that the fire station has re...
I can't hear you, Deb. Something with your mic, maybe...
Okay, so the fire station has rejected our three acres over there twice. Okay, so the fire station has rejected our three acres over there twice, and that is a, a nice piece of property, but the problem with it is, if you don't build down at Lake June Park, you have no bathrooms, and I believe if you're gonna have a park and you're gonna have a very, a big facility, you're gonna have to add in the bathroom, and that's gonna be an additional space, so expense, so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're talking about building all this, are we gonna take it at, down at Lake June Park where we're trying, now trying to preserve the green space, or are we gonna move it to another location, and then even if it's here, we're gonna have to have a public bathroom? So what are they now, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand, so you can't just say, you know what I'm saying, I'm just trying to point that out, because I think we all lose sight of what else do you have to do when you do that, that's a great idea, but we're gonna, it's not, it's not just the facility, you have to have bathrooms for people.
And, and future maintenance costs.
Yeah, future maintenance costs, but I mean, just for this project, we were talking about that, we have to have bathrooms for people, and I just wanted to point that out, and I'll try to amend my motion, but.
Would you like me, I have it, unless Eva has it, okay.
I'm in my motion to say.
To say, move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five-zero-two-LPTC dot twenty-five dot zero-zero-two-C one, CIS, with changes as follows, to remove the second Lake Placid Police Department car in this fiscal year, move the Public Works Complex to year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and break out Utility Fund and General Fund, remove the street sweeper, and include a splash pad slash dog park for three hundred thousand in the next two years.
Include that within the playground line item, just not by itself, right? There's a playground line item today of two hundred thousand, just make that say playground, comma, splash pad, comma.
Dog park.
Dog park, and then the amount be three hundred.
We can do that, but I worry, again, we could have a special meeting, I'm sure, but we are almost in some ways cornering ourselves with those funds to say we will specifically.
Do it all?
Yeah, I, I think it would be better to have a playground line item and a dog park splash pad line item.
Okay, that's fine, and that dog park splash pad would be only one hundred thousand, because the playground's two hundred, so we're taking the street sweeper, two hundred, and we're breaking it into two years for the splash pad, dog park. At one hundred thousand each? At one hundred each.
Yeah.
So the splash pad and the dog park will each have their own lines?
No, I, no, splash pad. They can be combined if you think, I, I mean. Splash pad, dog park, one line.
Well, you want them both at Lake June Ballfields? To, we, we do need to confirm that that would be the location because otherwise it would go under CRA. And we can't have anything on the town budget for three years preceding it going on the CRA, so I just wanna be careful before we add things.
I, I believe we're out of CRA limits here, but the large parcel that is behind us, I think would be the best location for it, with the police station coming in, an access road could be built, and it could be under better security, as, because we can gate it, allow certain hours.
The splash pad, or the dog park, or both?
All three could probably fit on that property.
And, and to put that where?
Behind here.
Now, that's gonna be another, that's gonna be another zoning change, isn't it, Dana?
I'm trying to remember if I included playground in there.
It's a multi, it's a, it's a municipal facility now. You know you're gonna come up with it, you always do. I know you are.
I probably can find something, but.
That's gonna give you another six months to your project, you might wanna consider changing the date.
Not true.
Do we want to, and this is just a suggestion, we have a grant that will be, or a grant application that will be submitted for a parks plan, that will provide us with additional data, assuming that we receive it, that would be able to outline where the best use, because they look at all of our properties. I know that that makes it where we kinda table it here, but just a thought, because we are, that, that will be submitted tomorrow. And since we can amend this at any time, we could always add it once we get additional feedback.
Do we have to signify a location? Can we just say it's a line item and we put it where we can?
We don't necessarily have to determine the location, we just have to determine that it would be outside of CRA limits at this time in order for it to get on our list.
Okay. I'd, I'd say we go with it, right? Because we can, we can take it off or change it in future, you know, budget cycle.
Okay, so the goal is splash pad and dog park to have their own line items each with a one hundred thousand dollars for two years or in two years?
One hundred thousand in the first year cycle one here and one hundred thousand in the second, so one hundred thousand in. But her question is two lines versus, we had talked about just making it one line of hundred. Are you saying we have to break out one line for splash pad and it's up with a dollar amount?
Whichever you prefer, I'm just trying to understand.
I think we're trying to make it easy, if that's okay with the process, of having, you've got playgrounds for two hundred, add a splash pad slash dog park for one hundred.
Okay.
And the same years as the.
As the playground.
As the playground, kinda, it walks with it.
Gotcha.
Will that work from your end?
Yes, I can make that work.
And the street sweeper goes, and the complex Public Works moves out, I think those are the changes.
Yeah.
Again, should we do it again, one more time?
Okay, so I'm in my motion to say.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five-zero-two-LPTC dot twenty-five zero-zero-two-CIS, with changes as follows, remove the Lake Placid Police Department additional car, move the Public Works Complex to the year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and break out the costs to the Utility Fund and the General Fund, remove the street sweeper, and add the splash pad slash dog park for the same years that the playground is slated for.
Thank you, and I need an amended second, please.
And I'll, that, you're, you're amending your motion to that, and I'll, I will amend my second to that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? We'll take it to the audience. Seeing none, bring it back, pull to council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Abara?
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty-two-five-zero-one, Lake Placid Church of Nazarene slash Polston Engineering Incorporated slash Dale Polston. And ordinance of Town of Lake Placid admitting the zoning classification of the property located at six oh eight West Inner Lake Boulevard, Lake Placid, Florida, from C two limited commercial district to C two PD limited commercial plan development district to allow for a church and church uses, and adding section one sixty dash twenty-two of the code of the Town of Lake Placid entitled Lake Placid Church of Nazarene Plan Development Ordinance, providing for severalability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. My name is Dana Riddell, I'm the town planner for the Town of Lake Placid, and tonight I'll go ahead and briefly go over the request for the Church of the Nazarene, this is ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero-one, and hearing number LPTC dot twenty-five dot zero-zero-one RZ. The owner is Lake Placid Church of the Nazarene, the agent is Polston Engineering, and the address is actually five twelve West Inner Lake Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from the subject property described above, from limited commercial district, C two, to limited commercial plan development district, C two PD, and then also being inserted into our land development regulations. On the screen, you can go ahead and see the aerial map displaying an image of the property on the left-hand side, those are the existing conditions as the property exists today, and on the right-hand side, you can view the future land use for the property and the surrounding properties. The property has a residential office, future land use, and a current zoning of C two limited commercial district. On the right-hand side, you see the proposed zoning, which would be C two PD. There's no request for increase or decrease on the amount of intensity, that would be the amount of square footage of building you're allowed to have on the property. It, the code currently allows up to fifty percent for churches, and what they'll build, what they're proposing to build is under fifty percent, but they're just keeping the standard the same. So to provide a little analysis of the surrounding properties, we have commercial operations to the north and east, directly to the south, we have the Lake Placid High School, and to the west, we have vacant properties that are zoned for future commercial and multifamily development. There were no substantial comments from staff. Potable water is available to the site, it is currently hooked up to potable water because the site is currently developed as a church. The reason for this request is because the church was built prior to zoning code, which means that when zoning code was applied, any future development had to follow the zoning code, but apparently in the Town of Lake Placid, there's not a single zoning code that allows churches to be built without special permission. So part of the reason for the request for PD today is simply for the use, to allow the use of a church because they're expanding that use, so now they have to make sure that it's, whatever the expansion is, meets today's code, or they can deviate from that through the PD process, which is what we're going through today. The property is currently on a septic system, they plan to stay on septic until water, I'm sorry, wastewater becomes available to the site. Uh, right now, water's currently available not too far from the high school, approximately one thousand one hundred square feet, uh, linear feet.
You said water, you mean sewer?
Thank you, sewer. I'm famous for doing that, so thank you. Yeah, solid waste is, the property is currently served by town refuse, they have not required the need for a full-size dumpster, they're happy to use their carts, we've asked as part of the PD to please screen their carts and put them in a discreet place, we've given them the latitude to be able to use a dumpster in the future if necessary, and if that's the case, they will need to screen it. The project doesn't generate any student impact, so additional coordination with the school was not required, a park is not required, but open space is required. There were a lot of questions regarding trails and paths at the local planning agency meeting, so if you watched that, just know I have updated my staff report, I've included additional information. I included information regarding the Collier to Polk trail map, now, if you look, it provides three alternatives, Collier to Polk, even though we have ABC, does not identify any, any one of those three alternatives as the better alternative, they are just options for the trail when it finally gets constructed. There are no imminent plans for funding of the trail, that will be up to us as a town. Right now, on this portion of West Inner Lake, there is a sidewalk that exists and connects to Devane Park, on the northwest side, uh, let's see, does my mouse work right in here? And north on Tangerine, and running east-west on West Inner Lake, there is a trail, the town purchased land to be able to place a trail there, again, we realize that's gonna be at least five years out if we can get on the next funding schedule. But I, multi-use paths are generally required on collector and arterial roads, but we didn't require that for this part, or, they've asked for deviation from that, and I have no opposition to that deviation because there's an existing sidewalk that connects everything, and I wouldn't ask them to rip up their existing sidewalk to put in a ten-foot path that is going to lead to a five-foot sidewalk. More information on the Highlands County Parks and Recreation Master Plan, they also show a multi-use path proposed in that area, and when we go forward and we actually do request funding, we will coordinate with Highlands County because there's something called LAP certification, which makes them able to manage their own projects, and we work with them and collaborate with them regularly, and we believe that that will be a great partnership. So what we really need to talk about today are the deviations from the code, I just wanna make sure that council is aware what the requests are. The applicant is proposing three phases, the first phase is to confirm that what is there is allowed to be there, just like what we did with the Town Hall PD. That is, you know, like I said, it was constructed before zoning, so we're just confirming, they have like a memory garden that comes right up to the property line, and it's these nice little pergola structures, but they don't necessarily really fall into any of my zoning lingo or building code, I'm calling them pergolas, but they might not even be that, it's just artistic structure, so we recognized that and made sure that that's allowed to stay there. Phase two would include the actual addition itself to the church, there's a time constraint on that, and phase three is an optional element of their plan to allow them to expand their parking in the future. They would be required to do commercial site plan review, um, we allowed the principal permitted uses, right now they have a, one or two sheds on the property, um, I believe they plan to consolidate that, put that into one building, and move that a little bit closer to Tangerine. And so we said anything under two thousand square feet, because that's the exemption that our code allows for commercial structures, if the town engineer allows it, that they could potentially add, you know, a shed, but they still have to meet their open space requirements, so that'll be limiting as well. No variances can be issued, this is standard for any PD, once a PD is approved, nothing can be changed unless you fix it by PD again. They're not proposing any major discrepancies when it comes to height, they're complying with the thirty-five foot requirement, they acknowledge that those pergolas I talked about have a maximum height of ten feet. Again, the lot coverage is fifty percent, and they have a minimum open space of thirty percent, but they're going to exceed that because one of the deviations they're requesting is to not, is to allow parking over grass. Exterior building materials, they've agreed to comply with the commercial architectural standards in our code. In terms of deviations from landscaping, so because it runs along a collector road, it requires ten foot of landscaping buffer yard along Tangerine and Inner Lake, the applicant is requesting a width of seven point six feet, the same amount of plantings, they would fulfill any planting requirements, but they are asking to reduce the width, and it's along a road. And then because of the fact that they're requesting all of their parking over grass, which I don't have an objection to, because they also committed to not, uh, they're, they're allowed to do churches and church uses, but they're not allowed to do a thrift store or a school or any of the more intensive things that sometimes churches do as ministries, so they've agreed to limit that, and so this parking really should be infrequent, one or two days a week, you know, Bible study on Wednesday and church on Sunday. So for that reason, that also is kind of the catalyst that sets off a couple other deviations from code, and we're gonna get into it in a minute, but one of them would be curbing, we generally like type F curbing throughout the town, but you can't hop a curb to park your car on the grass, so that got knocked out real quick. And then the canopy tree coverage, so I'm back on landscaping, this is what brought me here, and I just rabbit-holed a couple times, but canopy tree coverage requirement, so usually, say you have a thousand-foot parking lot, you are required to cover. You are required to cover fifty percent of that parking lot with canopy tree spread. In our code, it identifies the square footage that we'll use for canopy trees. So for example, an oak tree, I believe, is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four square feet. So almost two thousand square feet. So if I have a one thousand-foot vehicular use area, I need to cover five hun, that means five hundred feet of canopy tree coverage needs to be provided next to the parking lot. The reason for that, and it says in our code, is to try to lower ambient temperatures from the heat of the asphalt. So initially, I said, all right, well, you know, you're going to have very limited asphalt. I don't expect that the temperature has to rise or is going to rise much because of your development. Um, so I didn't necessarily oppose not requiring canopy tree coverage requirements. Now, the local planning agency, when we met at our last meeting, advised that they would like to see canopy trees still provided on the property to meet the requirement, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be next to the vehicular use areas because of the conflict, but to still keep that beautiful intense foliage and that nice look. Um, so they did agree to that. We weren't able before this hearing, because it's one-day turnover. We weren't able to agree on language for that until the package had already come out. Um, so we can make a vote on that. It's part of my recommended motion today if you wanted to do that. But on second reading, you can expect to see a change where they have agreed to provide the canopy tree coverage, just not next to the vehicular use area. So parking, the other thing with parking is that they're requesting spaces, not all of them, but some of their spaces on the perimeter to be ten by eighteen instead of the town's required ten by twenty. The town, the town's parking requirements are a little larger than other areas because we have so many trucks. Ms. Worley, I think, might have spoke on this before. But we have so many trucks and we have just such a country atmosphere in Lake Placid that there's so many people that really need those larger parking spaces. In this case, I went with something that I had also recently talked to council about, which is the idea of when developments come in, allowing them to really determine what their needs are for parking so that as a town, we're not requiring too much parking or too much asphalt or vehicular use area. I took that approach with Miller's AC, and I'm taking that same approach here. If council has a different thought, we can go that way as well. Uh, so we talked about the parking space size and obviously the fact that they're requesting to park over grass. The water management, you know, they'll comply with that. And then this is where I added the language for them to be able to use a dumpster if they need it. But if not, the town does allow businesses to use carts if that's their preference and, and if it fits. If they consistently don't fit in the cart, then Alan's going to raise a flag. Covered those. I have the site plan available on the screen if there's any questions on that. This is the layout, so I use this to help make some of my determination as well because I don't, we don't as the town, as zoning professionals and planning professionals, we don't regulate the interior of a structure. But I wanted to see what was going on in there because if they, if they increased the maximum seating capacity, then that triggers a slew of other requirements. And, um, it would maybe have me look a little closer at the septic or something like that because they'd be increasing their usage. But the, the thought process, and this is like standard when we're evaluating churches, the thought process is the main seating area is what you use to evaluate your occupancy. Fire might have a different set of standards, putting that out there. But that's where you're going to evaluate your parking requirements because it's based on the main seating area. And the pro, the thought process is that you aren't going to be using both parts of the church at once. You're supposed to have your church service, and then everybody comes out for fellowship after church or on a Wednesday night again, you know, we have our Bible study. They all meet in the main room there. So, a, and then they also added a kitchen. So I do want to correct myself. I did misspeak at the local planning agency meeting. This rendering that you see here is actually what the church is supposed to look like. So this is supposed to be quite accurate. It's supposed to be gray. It looks like concrete, stucco, um, these kinds of building materials. Now, there were other renderings. These are my other renderings, right? And these give you a better idea of what the parking situation might look like. And gives you just a, there, it's unlikely they're going to use palm trees because it's harder to meet your requirements when you do that. But this is more of an idea of what you might expect on the site, the site itself. So those are the trash carts. So the handicap parking is paved because when you have ADA parking, it needs to meet a certain slope. So the local planning agency made a motion on January sixth. They asked for changes, the change that we mentioned, which was keep the canopy tree coverage requirement by meeting a hundred percent of the requirements within the required buffer yard. I think that's how we ended up writing the motion. But the local planning agency actually wasn't committed to making sure the canopy tree coverage was in the buffer yard. They simply wanted the canopy tree coverage anywhere else on the property that would be meaningful. So, you know, maybe not in the bottom of the retention pond with an oak tree or something. Bert might like that. They wanted to make sure that we had coordinated fully on the multi-use path. And they also wanted to make sure that we had a good understanding of what the water situation was, just strictly based on the way that the capacity letter was written in the language that was used. And so to, to be clear, the town does have capacity for this development whenever it's ready to connect or whenever the lines extend and they have to connect. I have motion options available on the screen. And the agent is also here available for any questions. Um, this is actually a quasi-judicial hearing. So before we open up for comment, I will ask for ex parte communication and for Eva to swear us in. So Eva, if you would, please swear us in. And this will be Vlad and Marvin and any expert witnesses. And before we move on to sending it back to council, if I can go ahead and ask about ex parte communication, we'll start here and work our way down.
None.
Thank you.
Just with Dana.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
None.
None.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to our mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Joan.
Wait, questions, if you have questions.
I have questions.
Okay, my name is Marvin Wolf. I'm with Polston Engineering.
I'm Vlad, also over Polston Engineering.
I have questions. Kind of skipped right over that lighting section that was in there. And it's only a two, uh, two-line section. We could go back to that. There it is. Number O, lighting. Exterior lighting fixtures shall be shielded. Do not shine toward any adjacent properties, adjacent roads. I agree with that. The lighting shall be directed to shine onto the subject property to reduce any negative impacts on others. I did not see any lighting fixtures in any of your mock-ups as far as trying to light up the parking area.
We, we did show a few lights on our plan view. It was difficult to show them on the mock-ups. But we can potentially get you some additional sketches showing the lighting fixtures.
Okay, my concern is that, my concern is that the overall light readings on the property where the, where the cars will be parked, which is where is the biggest concern for people's safety, that that would be consistent with what the standards are for appropriate churches, which would probably be within, somewhere within the five-foot candle range. Is that right, chief? Yep. So I, and that's an, that's an average foot candle range across the whole part that you would have parking, including the grass section because that's the, that's the dangerous part for people getting in and out of their cars at night. So the nodding of the heads means that you would approve that?
So perhaps the request is to provide a lighting plan that shows no more than five-foot candles at, adjacent to the property line?
No, it would be a lighting plan that would, that would constitute at least five-foot candles average across the part of the plan that consists of parking. He's like, he's looking at me like, I'm not so sure how we'd do that. Okay?
Well, we also have to make sure that we provide it so it's not pointing out toward the right-ofways or adjacent properties.
Probably box lights.
So would that increase the, the lights you're thinking of?
Yes, that would increase the number of lights that we had shown on the sketches.
Oh, yeah. You'd probably have, I think you showed, well...
Well, there were mainly box lights on the building, plus I think we had two or three in the parking area.
Right, you'd probably have to have six.
Yes, we'll have to, we'll have to go through the calculations to determine that.
Right, right.
Thank you. Did you have more?
Notice it?
Okay.
Any other questions?
Of course.
Entertainer motion with the changes made?
No, I have, I have a couple comments. Okay. So where the sidewalk is leading up to, or say there's a sidewalk there, is all of that big enough on multi-use path and they just put sidewalks there, or is it too narrow? For the adjoining property as well?
Can you show Google Earth, the street view?
I'm just saying...
Well, the, the, what, the reason I'm saying that is because currently there is fifteen to twenty feet of grassed area from the edge of pavement to the sidewalk. And there is approximately one or two feet from that sidewalk to the property line. So there is enough room, ten feet, within the right-ofway. But they don't have swales, they don't have drainage, they don't have culverts in that area at this time. Because we have, that soil in that particular area is very high percolation soil.
Oh, I know.
So if they did build something, there would be plenty of room to put a sidewalk, multi-use path, ten feet wide, I believe is what they're looking for within that area.
I just don't want to limit us on our, just because there's a sidewalk there now, I don't want to limit us in the future for a multi-use path because that's in the area of our schools.
Right.
And I, and I mean going to the ball fields or going down to, um, Tangerine to the park. The, I know the middle school at one time had a program where if you were in the ten percent uh, grade-wise, then you got to go down to the park and have a, a party or something. Well, we, we send our best and brightest down a street that has no multi-use path and no sidewalk. And I just, I just, I always wonder about that. I just, anyway, but I'd like to be able to preserve it, even if there's a sidewalk there, but we have enough room to put multi-use paths because I believe in those rather than sidewalks.
Okay, so if you, I don't know if you see the, the video here or the screen. There is plenty of room along Interlake to have that additional five feet of walkway. Along Tangerine, though, I believe when they widened the access there for Tangerine, they did not acquire enough right-ofway to provide a sidewalk ten feet wide or multi-use path along Tangerine.
You're talking just to the school because I think...
Right, from, from Interlake to the school, what she's showing now, there's only that small strip of grassed area, and then again, maybe one or two feet toward our property line that is right-ofway.
I think it, because the plan on Interlake is to widen it to four lanes. So if it gets widened to four lanes, to Councilwoman Worley's question is, you know, it may in the future not be wide enough. Don't know what that means, or you encroach a little more on the church's property.
Well, you would have to essentially, it looks like...
She's right.
I think that it looks...
We're dealing with a county road right-ofway.
Yeah.
Right.
What we're going to do, it can't do that.
Yeah.
It's not ours.
Right, but again, the counties has a detailed section for having a four-lane road with multi-use path. And I believe they have it within one hundred feet of right-ofway. And I'm not sure what the, I'm, I don't have it in front of me right now, what the actual right-ofway width is for Interlake.
Yeah, I mean...
Eighty? Okay.
And it goes, it's different sizes in different areas. It is, I have, yeah. But the good news here is there's no building going along here. So, so if there's not enough land and you need a couple more feet for the multi-use path, the building is going up against the high school, not along Interlake. So that'll just stay all open grass area.
It will be, it will be part of our parking area, yes.
Right. Which is grass.
And, and this is to the church's knowledge as well. Again, I did question the size of the parking lots. You, we all know that whether, wherever you go in Lake Placid, there's mostly trucks and bigger vehicles. So that's why we went to the different size on our parking. But I mean, if you think, I mean, whatever everybody thinks, I'm just saying, you as, as a church, I would want to accommodate the people that are there and make sure that there was enough space and parking for the people that are going to come there. And I'm telling you, I've gone to things that are, it's everything in the parking lots are truck. And some of them are long bed, and that's why in our area. That will change eventually. I won't be here, but that will change eventually. It'll be all cityfied and have little beamers and all that. But right now, we have trucks.
Okay, so to the question of the parking space size, the majority of the parking spaces are ten by twenty.
Okay.
Any vehicles that are butting up against each other, they are ten by twenties. What we try to take advantage of by doing the ten by eighteens are whether you're actually parking and you have grass on the front end of your vehicle. So it gives you that additional two extra feet for your front wheels to overhang potentially. So that's where the, the perimeter areas would be the ones that actually are only eighteen-foot. But if you could actually draw a line and say it's twenty feet, because again, we're not paving it on those parking spaces. So you actually have more space than really twenty feet if you look at it. So again, any, any, any spaces that are butting up to each other, along with the handicap spaces, are a minimum of twenty foot in depth.
Okay, and then I had one more comment. I'm very concerned, I, there's one other time we allowed somebody to park across the street on a lot. It's a disaster. They put in some shell because the grass didn't work, and it is not good. And, and it, it's not where you come right into town. It's not going to our beautiful Lake June Point or to our parks or anything. I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about grass and the use, and what it's going to look like in the future. You guys have been good stewards of your property. Absolutely, your property looks wonderful all the time.
I agree with the canopy trees. I'm a little bit concerned because it may get out of hand when you have, you know, you're, hopefully, I know you're building this, that people will come, a lot of people more will come, right? Expand the church. But I'm just saying, I'm a little bit concerned. That's one of our main entrances to our gateway to our areas. So I just, I just wanted to voice my concerns.
I'm not concerned about the grass because I drive by your place, you know, whatever, how many times a week, and it always looks good. And my church, we also park on the grass, and it looks good. So I'm not worried.
And I'm the same. I drive by that church and every Sunday, I mean, I don't think there's any overcapacity, right? So, um, everything is very pristine and that. So I, I, and the same thing, go to the same church as Joy, and we park on the grass and underneath the oak tree. And I don't...
oak tree, and I don't see any problem with that, so...
They have been taking a good care of this place, and I just want you to know that when we design a grass park, and we also design it to have some bays or sub-bays, so it's not going to get destroyed, so it's going to be designed to have some law on it, so.
I love the grass as far as versus pavement, yeah, great.
And I do agree with the addition, holding the regulation on the canopy trees, because it isn't, it's also, trees diffuse 60% of the runoff, and as you mentioned, we have a lot of problems with runoff in our, on our ridge, so the trees diffuse the runoff, 60%, that's why people stand under trees and get struck by lightning and lightning storm, because it's not as raining as hard under there, so the trees actually help with our runoff, so I would agree that we keep the canopy trees.
I'll make the motion if you put it back up there. I'll make a motion to approve hearing number LPTC dot 25 dot 001, our Z ordinance Number 2025 dash 01, on first reading, with changes as follow, require the canopy tree coverage, but allow the canopy tree coverage to be located away from the vehicular use areas, and then help me with the wording now for the lighting.
So that the lighting on the parking areas would be consistent with industry standards to average of five-foot candles across that property.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments from the audience?
Yes.
Hearing none, bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Joy made the most, the second.
It's all right.
Who did the second?
I did. It's okay.
Sorry.
Yes.
And Councilmember Everhart?
I'm good. I think so.
Got it?
Yes, I didn't hear my name, but yes, anyway.
Oh, Councilmember Hayes. Councilmember Hayes.
I was confused.
Deborah and Joy sounded about the same. Is that a yes, Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I'm yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next, we'll go to number five, resolutions, we've got, looks like five of First one is 2025 dash 01, resolution recognizing Hoss Compton's services to Lake Placid.
I think that's 02, sir. That's 2025 02.
Oh, it says 01 here.
Yeah, it says 02.
Okay, yeah, I see, that says, huh, 2025 02, okay.
Yeah, it is, this is 01, but it's 02, not mistaken.
Scroll down, keep going. There you go.
The Lake Placid Town Council was duly assembled on the 13th day of January 2025. A quorum was present, Mayor John Holbrook presided. Among other things, the town council took pause to reflect upon Hosmer Lee Compton's four decades of public service to the citizens of the town of Lake Placid. Upon motion duly made and seconded, the following resolution was adopted by the Lake Placid Town Council. Whereas Hoscompton has been a vital member of our town's business community for over 40 years, working as a printer, building contractor, and realtor, and whereas Hoscompton as a building contractor invested his time, talent, and treasure to develop North Main Avenue by constructing Compton Plaza, modestly named, and whereas Hoscompton worked to improve the town of Lake Placid through his service as member and president of the Greater Lake Placid Chamber of Commerce, through which he created and published the motto, "Try Lake Placid First." And whereas Hoscompton was a founding and dedicated member of Keep Lake Placid Beautiful Incorporated, through which he donated time and treasure to plant and maintain the town's landscaping and beautification projects. And whereas Hoscompton was for 40 years a member and chairman of the Lake Placid Local Planning Agency, an integral part of our town government, working for the responsible growth of our town, and whereas Hoscompton was appointed by the town council and the Board of County Commission to the Lake Placid Regional Planning Committee, and by his peers elected its first chairman, with the charge of planning the responsible growth of the entire Lake Placid area. And whereas the Lake Placid Regional Planning Committee worked four years to produce the Lake Placid Regional Plan, which was approved by the State of Florida Department of Community Affairs, adopted into town code by the Lake Placid Town Council, and adopted into the county code by the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners, as the plan for the growth of the town and surrounding unincorporated areas. The plan addresses the density, intensity, water, sewer, roads, transportation, building standards, annexation, signage, building height, and many other concepts intended to maintain and improve the quality of life in Lake Placid. And whereas Hoscompton's next adventure is the construction of a hospital in the remote and underserved regions of the purvey, I don't know if I was...
Peruvian.
How am I, I don't know if I could say that right. Andes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lake Placid Town Council that the town of Lake Placid recognizes Hosmer Lee Compton's 40 years as an outstanding citizen, leader, and servant for the people of Lake Placid, Florida. Hoscompton is bestowed the honorary title of chairman emeritus.
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 Shall be addressed within the town as Mr. Chairman, and the newly acquired property on Dow Hall Boulevard shall be named Compton Park, resolved and spread upon the pages of the town minutes this 13th day of January 2025. I do have comments that were emailed to myself and the members of the council, I believe, and also our town attorney as well, was included in that.
Do we need a motion and a second to discuss it in that regard, or? Because if we do, I would make that motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the...
The resolution.
The resolution, thank you.
If you want.
As written.
Do it by number, you can.
I was looking at it, just a moment here. Oops, too far.
2025 dash 02, I guess.
Yes, thank you, thank you. 2020, resolution number 2025 dash 02 of the town council, celebrating the public service of Hosmer Lee Compton.
I've got a motion and a second, and I'll entertain comments.
This was received by Ms. Marlene Barger, I don't see her in the audience, but she did ask me to read this. She made comments that she would rewrite the statement of Hoss's time on the LPA to read, whereas Hoscompton served as chairman and member of the Lake Placid Local Planning Agency for 40 years, and through his vision secured the town's tranquil, tranqu, tranquil, sorry, these braces are giving me a fit today, ambiance and serene nature for all to admire and enjoy today and for years to come. And this is particularly important, because Hoss was the leader in preventing big-box stores inside the town's limits. This is worthy of the town's recognition. I think my words state the importance of Hoss's efforts. Perhaps one of you have a better suggestion. Perhaps two of the whereas items on regional planning committee could be combined as follows. Whereas Hoscompton was appointed by the town council and the Board of County Commission to the Lake Placid Regional Planning Committee, served as its first chairman, and worked four years to produce the Lake Placid Regional Plan, which defined density, intensity, water, sewer, roads, transportation, annexation, signage, building height, and growth standards for the town and surrounding unincorporated areas, all of which will protect and preserve quality of life in Lake Placid. The last whereas, dealing with Peru, is irrelevant with regard to the intent of this resolution, suggests that it be deleted. All the other whereas are fine. I certainly hope the resolution will undergo artist enhancement for printing and framing. Then she came back with, as I think more about this, was the town not seeking to name a park after Hoss? A proclamation would be more fitting. The mayor signed a proclamation for Harriet and Bob Porter in May 2022. Bob and Harriet executed a clear vision for historic and professionally painted murals inside the town. What they started in 1992 is now known worldwide for its murals, and many towns in Florida have started their own murals. Our beautiful murals bring thousands of visitors to Lake Placid each year. These murals have received and/or sustained our many businesses for many years, particularly in the summer months. The town did not name a park after them. Attached is a proclamation the mayor and clerk signed, it was printed on cream linen paper and professionally framed. Again, thank you, Marlene Barger.
Proclamation is an act of the mayor, requires no consent or approval of council. A resolution is an act of this town by the council. Hence, I thought it would be better broadly stated and then signed by everybody, rather than just the mayor.
So, I'll jump. Does this thing shut off?
I'll jump in with a couple comments, and I think recognition of a lot of the contributions that Hoss has made to the town is appropriate, and I appreciated getting that background on Harriet, on the Porters, right, because, you know, I'm always big on consistency, and what is the process, and then are we consistent in that? And I did try to go back to see if we've ever named any parks, or things, or roads, and that, so I have no issue at all recognizing Hoss, I have a concern, and I'm opposed to naming a park after him. And I'm more opposed to this park, because remember, we had a citizen at the last meeting, so Hoss, and I don't mean this negatively, but he didn't contribute to the purchasing of the park, right? If the land that he had purchased for the, I mean, you had said he gave us, donated some land, that's kind of appropriate when somebody gives you something, maybe then you consider naming something after him, but when the citizen told us that we could have got that park donated to us, and there's a little background there, I have a greater concern of then naming a park after him, when maybe there's a little background of how we acquired it in the first place. So, I totally support recognizing him, whether it's the proclamation, I think what they did with the Porters was pretty cool, too. I mean, a proclamation sounds cool, here you, here you, the mayor is bestowing something on you, or if it's the town council, either way, but I, my concern is naming a park after him.
I'd just like to bring to your attention, or anyone that doesn't realize it, the Porters did, you know, obviously, they drove the bus when it came to the murals, and they're obviously a strong part of our town, but if I'm not mistaken, there's a mural with them on it, and I think that's appropriate for their recognition of their contribution, and in the same vein, I think in this regard, it's appropriate to have a park that is, that is named for Hoss, because I don't think it really shows, even though that the resolution is nicely done, I don't think it really shows what a driving force Hoss was during those 40 years that I was here, and some people, although they've been here a long time, they've not been here 40 years, almost 50 years now, and he was definitely a driving force in the beginning of this town and to take it to where we are today. So, I think it's totally appropriate that we name a park for him, whether it's this park or another one, I'm not real sure, but I think it's important that we would do that. And thirdly, I just think it's important to leave in his dedication to the Peruvian Andes and to building a hospital over there, he's been very involved in that project over a number of years, and I think it goes to showing and underscoring the heart that he has for people in general.
The point about, again, I agree, everything that Hoss has done for the town is, you know, just amazing, but the thing about the park, the circumstances of acquiring the park, does put a cloud, and there might even be a better place to name after him.
What was that last statement?
There may be even a better place that could be named after him.
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe there's a better place even than that park to name after Hoss.
I recall a few years ago when Phil Williams retired, there was a discussion and a motion to name Lake June Park after him, and that was, you know, turned down. I mean, he didn't want it himself, but, so, and the Porters, their faces are in a mural, it's not a mural on the Porters, so just to clarify there. I mean, we could put Hoss's face in a mural, too, we could have, you know, part of a mural, that could be a nice...
I don't think that's as appropriate for Hoss as it is for the Porters, it's certainly appropriate for the Porters.
My bigger question is the process of, because there's, you know, if we're going to start process of naming parks and things after people, it'd be nice to have, well, what is the criteria for that? And again, not taking anything away from Hoss, it's just, I personally am not there that that warrants a park named after him.
I have to say, I don't get many comments from the public, but I did have comments that, why does the park get named after one person and not another? Maybe they thought that maybe somebody else had done more. So, at this time, I would say, let's just maybe get some better ideas, get some, maybe come up with a better idea, somewhere better for him to be recognized, even than the park, and maybe get rid of that questioning what, how parks are done, and whether they think somebody else should be named after the, you know, I don't know, I don't get many comments, but whatever reason, naming things comes very important to people, just want to let you know.
So, would you want to amend it to exclude the park name?
I would.
Do what now? So, the motion would be simply to adopt the resolution without the park name?
Mm-hmm, would that work?
Yes, ma'am, it would.
I'd let that work, I'll acquiesce to that.
Okay, do we second it, second?
Well, she's seconding it, so.
Everhart, the second is, so she has to approve the change.
I believe the motion and the second was...
You just have to amend your second.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I amend my second.
And you think a proclamation is, a resolution is more important or impactful than a proclamation?
Absolutely.
Yes.
In my view, it is, because that way, we all sign it, and I think it just shows it comes more from the town, instead of just one individual. All right, so we have a motion and a second. True? Any comments from the audience? Bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Next, now I'm not sure what it is, 2025, oh, okay, instead of 2025 02, it's 2025 03. Okay, it's the, we're thanking FDOT for the landscaping budget, and just so you know, that comes to about 1.8 million? It does. So, this is a resolution that I think we need to send, just to let the state of Florida know that we are grateful that everything that they have done, not only for Highlands County, but especially for Lake Placid, so.
So, I move that we adopt resolution number 2025 dash 03, thanking FDOT for the landscape renovation budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments? Hearing none from the podium, we'll take it to the audience. All right, seeing none... All right, seeing none there, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, this next one looks okay. 5C, Resolution 2025-05, for the Heartland National Bank Line of Credit. They have really worked hard with us, with our, our financial group to get this resolved. And I'd, I'd like to see us approve this one. We'd like to keep the bank on our side also.
All right, I'm on a roll. I move to approve Resolution 2025-05, Resolution of the Town of Lake Placid, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of the loan documents with Heartland National Bank to fund certain improvements to the sewer system.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments from the podium?
I just have a question. The 52,000, what is that for? Where the, the impact, the estimated fiscal impact is 52,500 out of the wastewater operating account? Does that interest?
That's interest.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, no more from the podium, any from the audience? Bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay. Next is Resolution 2025-04, Resolution for the Highlands County Quilt Guild Public Event Sign Permit. You discussed and wanted to, no, wait a minute, is this the one with the South entrance sign?
This is a quilt guild sign.
Never mind, I'm sorry. Forgive me. This, now this is a, a resolution of Town of Lake Placid, Florida, approving public event signs as requested by the Highlands County Quilt Guild, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. The way I understand it, they want to have some sort of a quilt show, and they, they just, they just want to advertise it accordingly. I believe they've agreed to all the conditions and terms that you've set forth.
Correct. I believe that this application meets the standards for the signage. It does go back to the ultimate question of what is a public event? And if an event held on someone's private property should be eligible for signage such as this? We do have another item on the agenda tonight to discuss signage. So the black marks on this site plan indicate where they'd like to place their signs, and this is the proposed signage.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Highlands County Quilt Guild for placing the signs that have been presented to the town for approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further comment?
It's a wonderful show.
This is during country fair?
Uh, February.
Is this during country fair? That weekend?
I didn't see a date, that's what.
It's January 29th and February 1st.
February 1st. Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
It's a conjunction.
Country fair is February 1st and 2nd.
That would then my only curiosity is 10 extra signs around, so they don't interfere with, you know, country fair and other types of signs.
The Chamber of Commerce did not submit any requests for signage during their country fair?
I don't think we have signs for the country fair.
That's what she just said, okay.
I don't, I don't think we have that.
Okay. Where are we at?
A motion and a second.
We got a motion and a second, any further comment? From the audience? Poll the council.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Okay, the last one is 2025-01, I hope that's, yeah. A resolution of Town of Lake Placid, Florida, adopting the 10-year capital financial strategy of the Town of Lake Placid, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. So this would be an extension of what we discussed earlier tonight. We won't be making any votes, but if council has a consensus on any changes to the capital financial strategy, I'm happy to take that into account and bring it back for the adoption of the resolution at the next hearing.
Say that again, what's, what's the timing?
So resolutions are only required to be read one time. But since we are also bringing this concurrently with the capital improvement plan, that is required to be read two times. Instead of not letting you see it this time, we're just bringing it before you in case you do have any changes or requests or alterations. And then we're not taking a vote on approval today. We'll do that next time at the same time with our capital improvement plan.
So what are you looking for today? Nothing? My fishing pier added in the out years, right?
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, that would be.
So are the changes that we did on the capital improvement schedule will be reflected the second time around?
Yes, exactly.
But that's only five years. So now in year six through 10, are there additional things that you'd like to see? And then that's just a placeholder here. I'd like to see a fishing pier. You could put it in year seven, I don't know how much money, but.
I'm sorry, give me one moment, I came for the quilt guild thing, so I didn't bring my paper, I'll be right back.
Well, she's grabbing something, a little history on that, because the existing pier was funded by FWC. We got into a real dust-up with them after the fact. Now, this is 15 years ago. They didn't want swimmers even near the, I'm sorry, existing fishing pier and boat ramp. They didn't want swimmers near the coming and going, so I assume you're looking at the far.
The far side where it's, where the boat, where the pump posts and everything needs to be cleared. And I would do it like Bishop Park, take it out farther, and, and I would have it ADA compliant, where, you know, somebody with a wheelchair can go out and go fishing, and then you still, so the way Bishop Park has theirs designed, they have the swim area, and they have the pier.
Not taking issue with it at all, I think it would be a great public service to have that available. But you just know we've got to work around FWC.
Sure.
Because we took their money.
Whosever money we can take, I'm happy with that. I mean, there's no argument. We can.
So I'm sorry, can you repeat that? So fishing pier, what is the dollar amount?
I threw that dollar amount back to you. I have no clue. I have. We can get that. Yeah.
But, and you said two years out from 20?
I'm saying year seven.
Year seven, okay, thank you. All right, so, Burt, I don't need a vote, right? Consensus is fine.
I'm sorry, on what, on the resolution?
Yeah, because I'm not passing the resolution tonight, do I need an actual vote?
You do not.
Okay.
Do, do we need, and again, back to pass and trails in these out years, should we put some money out there? Year seven, eight, nine, somewhere, you know?
I'd love to see that.
I do, too. I mean, the public wants that bad. And we've purchased land for it, and there it sits. So I, I throw some money in there in year seven, eight, and nine for pass and trails.
I hate having to wait that long, but yeah.
I do, too. So make it six, seven, and eight, then, right?
Where, we, we should check to see where we fall within the central Florida regional planning with the trail connectivity.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Six, seven, eight. And you know what? Maybe we have to pursue different grants than the ones for the HRTPO.
Makes it better. Let's put it as six, seven, and eight. Year six, seven, and eight, that way we can section it in.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Yep, those were the ones I had.
Need any more from us?
Nope, that is it, but I will hang out because I think I'll be involved in the next one.
Okay. All right, next is CA1 roadside vending ordinance, moratorium and code review. I don't know, do we need to read it? No, I think if she just, if she just wants to go with it.
Would you like to read it, or we don't need to?
No, so we only really need to read in resolutions or ordinance captions, so if you'd like to go ahead and launch into a little background and overview as to, you know, how this got on the agenda and, and what you're looking to do.
Well, okay, last meeting, we, there's a, I don't know, the, the code and food trucks aren't aligning, the old code. So I brought it up, and I think the summary here says, it says it succinctly, much better than I can, as far as the back history.
If you'd prefer to read it, you can read it.
Okay, so it's, it's basically the current roadside vending ordinance, sections 117-16 through 117-19, the town code, governs the permitting operation, zoning requirements for roadside vending, including food trucks. The recent increases in food truck activity have brought attention to concerns about safety, zoning compliance, and equitable regulations. In addition, there has been recognition of the positive impact of food trucks bring to the community. Food trucks have been, become a popular attraction, contributing to the town's revenue and tax base while fostering community engagement and vibrancy. To ensure these benefits are balanced with public safety and operational standards, a review and potential revision of the code sections is necessary. And then on the back of the proposals, I think we have already authorized staff to review, correct?
Correct. Well, more than anything, it's now encumbered in the master planning process.
Okay. And what I'm asking is to consider in the, what to do in the meantime. Dana is stuck between enforcing the code as written versus we have a code that doesn't match today's environment. So I would like to open a discussion as to whether or not we want to put a temporary memor, moratorium on enforcing the code until we can go through the review and possible review process. And it could be, let's say, 180 days or less, depending on the review process. So I'm opening for discussion.
So I, I'll just, excuse me, profess my ignorance, does this mean if you put a moratorium on, you're trying to put a moratorium on enforcing the code as it is written? Does that translate into we leave the food trucks alone for the time being? And we don't allow any additional ones, but we keep the ones that we have now and we allow them to operate the way they are currently operating until we figure out how we want them to operate?
Well, whether or not we allow any additional ones is a good question. I don't know, that could be a part of the discussion.
But does it, does a moratorium mean that we just leave everything the way it is and we allow them to operate the way they're operating now until we have time to discuss it and figure out what we want to do going forward? Is that right?
Correct. And, and, and I think right now, the food trucks, I would say as far as, they would still be required to have the proper licensing and insurance. It's, there would be a moratorium on the location where they choose to vend.
Right. But, but they can do what they're doing now for now.
That sounds like a moratorium on new permits.
That's what it says.
I think the way it's written, you're saying none of them can be there.
No, 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 no. A moratorium on enforcing the current code onto what has been in practice now for a couple of years.
Right, the current code says they can't park in the right of way. But they've been parking in the right of way. But this is saying moratorium on new permits, which does mean those that are in.
No, no.
That's what, I'm just, that's what this says.
Why does it say that?
Implement.
It was written that way.
Under the proposal, go to the proposal.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch that part with, somebody else wrote it for me. Moratorium on new roadside permits. So, well, we could do that.
Quick question, how much is a permit for a food truck today?
Food truck permitting is 100% preempted to the state, and there's not any permits that we can issue at the local level to regulate food trucks.
So who would this moratorium on new permits be for?
What, my understanding is, I think it was worded maybe differently than it was meant. So disregard the language here on this cover sheet, but I believe that Ms. Everhart is asking, and usually this isn't how a moratorium would be enacted, so I'm going to use different language. I believe Councilwoman Everhart is asking for us to not enforce food trucks until the food truck code is amended. I would like to make a comment. Our roadside vending regulations do not only apply to food trucks. I received a call last week of a business owner, rightfully so, because they saw how the food trucks operate in the right of way, and they would like to put tents out in the parking spaces for a pop-up sale for their business. So if we do not, if we take the action not to enforce this code, that means that any food truck that comes to town and wishes to sell in the right of way would be allowed in addition to any business owner or whoever wants to come set up a tent in our road. Because there is no permitting requirement for food trucks, we can't say no new permits going forward because we can't regulate the permitting of them. And I think that's why the code needs to be addressed if it is council's desire to have food trucks vending in the right of way. Because there's no, if we rip off the Band-Aid and we don't regulate it at all for likely the next 365 days, because I expect it's going to take that full year for that master plan to come to fruition. We don't have any standards to even say, you're this close or you're this far away from the road, like from where people are driving. You know, you're, you're set up too close to that area. Or if, I believe that there's certain areas in town where they might arrange for a food truck to come because they want that food truck. But what would stop another food truck from saying, today's my day, I'm going to post up here, and no one can rent this to me, no one can tell me not to, because there's no rules or regulations?
Can't the owner of that property tell them they can't?
It's us.
Yeah, in the right of way. So we do allow food trucks on private property, I want to be clear about that.
Right. That's, that's what I'm thinking. So the, the food trucks on private property are controlled or can be controlled by the owner of that property. We're talking about food trucks that's set up in the right of way.
Correct.
So, give me an example of one of the food trucks that sets up in the right of way, so I can get my head around it.
El Ranchito? Is it Ranchito?
You want the location or the name of the truck?
Well, I don't care about the name of the truck, I'm just thinking about the location.
The Journal Plaza, right there, when you're stopped at Dale Hall in the unloading zone.
Okay.
There's a couple nights a week, always a food truck right there. It's very busy and very popular, I mean.
Yeah, so is that, is that considered right of way, or is that private property?
No, that's us.
Correct, it is in the right of way.
It's all in the right of way. Michael, is any of that on, on your property? Yes, please.
Michael Noel, Lake June Road, 74 Lake June Road, Lake Placid. I'm also the owner and interested party in a couple businesses. I'm also the owner and interested party in a couple businesses at the Journal Plaza where over the last three years, we have had food trucks parking in the right of way. The right of way area that they are occupying is a loading zone, which is inactive during the hours that they're there, and it doesn't block any traffic. So, or rather parking either. So I, I would ask the town to contemplate those areas that would meet certain criteria, such as loading zones that do not obstruct roadways or parking places, and I can give you a real good example of one, the Journal Plaza, where we've got a history of operating in that manner with those food trucks. There are other local restaurants that are able to do business, it doesn't interfere with their business. There have been no incidences over the last three years that have impacted anyone in that area. Now, food trucks are a special breed because they don't require permits because they're permitted at the state level. And in most of those food trucks cases, they're actually better equipped than most of the kitchens that you'll find in town because they have full hoods, exhausts, and things that they can prepare foods that other people can't. So it does bring a variety down there. Now, those trucks aren't the same as a business saying, I want to put up tents in the parking places in front of my business. That would be very easy to differentiate in my mind between a licensed food truck and someone who wanted to expand their business in the parking spaces. So I, I don't see the conflict there, but if there's another question that I can help clarify, I'm happy to.
Okay, I, I'm just picturing, I, obviously I'm familiar with the, with the food trucks at, at that, at the Plaza, but I also remember when we had the event where we closed the, the street, the Chamber event that we had there, there were a couple of additional food trucks, and they operated within the parking spaces, but that was because they could do that, basically because we had the street closed, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I would ask for a little clarification there, it is a state road, but the right of way, to my understanding from council members in the past, is actually maintained by the town.
Right.
Is anybody able to clarify that for me?
I think the right of way is maintained by the town. Fred?
Enter, uh, Main Street, the travel ways on the county jurisdiction, parking areas, sidewalks, or the towns, is my understanding. I don't think we've been able to find, at least that's my understanding, at staff-level discussions. I'm not aware of any document that says that. If there's ever a lawsuit, there's probably gonna be a lot of this going on.
Right, well, and I know the same would apply for Interlake because that's a straight, state road or county road as well.
Exactly.
And those parking places are maintained by the town. Any permitting required outside in unincorporated Highlands County would obviously have to go through the county for approval, but since these are properties that are town properties maintained by the town, I think you would have a little bit more latitude and control over those areas. Once again, that met the criteria that said, no, it's not blocking traffic, it's not taking parking places, it's a designated loading zone. I don't know of any of those on Interlake that would be that same type of opportunity, but certainly if someone presented that, I would say sure, because it matches those criteria that are currently something that could be part of your future code maybe.
I wouldn't go quite so far as you did by saying it doesn't involve the county, because when it's on the county road in a pub- public right of way, they do express a concern, and any concern that we do, even on our portion, they will claim, have claimed it impacts them, not ready to say, hey, don't worry about the county, that, that remains an issue we need to.
Well, I've called, um, road and bridge and engineering, and neither one could answer the question, so I could have gone to code, but they would have sent me back to road and, and bridge, and then engineering, so. That's always been the history that I've known, especially in terms of budgets, because the town doesn't want to take responsibility for the traffic way, and the county doesn't want to take responsibility for those right of ways. So that seems to be the way it's always practically operated.
It is, just because that's a lot of money either way.
I think that we may get clarification from staff, but my understanding through the years is that the county owns the road and the right of way. We pave it, we maintain it, that's what, no? Because we just recently went through a thing with the county because we were trying to put pavers down, and they said, you can't do that. How can they tell us what to do on the right of way when they shouldn't be saying anything then, because they, we just went through this?
Because they permitted that process for drainage, and the pavers were in the drainage, am I?
Was in the crosswalk area, it's part of the CRA project, where they had said that we would have to get a permit to, um, to put in some type of pebbles and pavers if that was the route we were going. Basically what they told us was we could only put mulch or sod in that area, because they own the crosswalk.
So I.
And they own the right of way.
So I, I don't want to get into the discussion that would occur later, I think what we need to address is what's in front of us right now. Do we want to approve a temporary moratorium as it's written, yes or no?
Can we craft something, the wording, such that, um, there'd be a moratorium provided the food truck is properly licensed and permitted by the state? That would take care of the tent issue.
I just, I have to say, I, I understand that the tent issue is totally separate in a lot of our minds than the food truck issue, but the way our code is written, it is one umbrella.
Yeah, but that's, that comes in under the discussion part, not under what we're trying to do tonight.
Right, so, but I'm saying if we apply a moratorium, I, I wouldn't know how to.
Separate them.
It would not, it would, okay, I'm trying to craft a, not a blanket moratorium on the whole code, just a carve-out to, uh, not enforce this issue.
Could I make a suggestion?
Can I ask a quick question?
Wouldn't it be allow a deviation to allow food trucks until a revised?
There's nothing in our code that allows that type of deviation.
So if we can do a moratorium for this, then why can't we do a moratorium for the sign ordinance, put up our little wayward signs and put up banners? I mean, I don't understand that, I'm gonna make one more comment, and I think we need to ask the town attorney. Can we even do a moratorium when we have a code? But they don't have bathrooms, and if they're just gonna willy-nilly set up on our right of ways, where do they go to the bathroom? Where do they wash, I mean, I guess they wash their hands inside, but I've just, all these roadside vendors, that's me, you're eating their food. Where are they going to the bathroom?
Right there in the Journal Plaza as a rest, as an open restaurant.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, and before we turn over to the town attorney, because I want to add my question. My concern is liability to the town, okay? I, I support the food trucks, and I think that they're, um, positive. I, I will later make a comment regarding restaurants and brick and mortar on something I can think can help, but my biggest is the liability to us if that food truck with a propane tank catches fire, you know, something where you have, people will get injured. So the, you know, we'd make, need to make sure, but again, this is to the town attorney, how we protect ourselves on allowing anything to be, you know, conduct business in the public right of way.
Mr. Noel, is part of the permitting and licensing a requirement to have insurance?
And does it indemnify the town, or that's where I would want the town attorney to be looking at some of those, um, contracts to make sure that we really are protected? That, that's my number one concern, is public right of way, public responsibility, and liability, and how we can work around, make sure that we're protected there. To you.
Loud and clear, tough issue. My initial thought would be, let's leave it like it is for the moment. Please continue this discussion, tell us what you're trying to accomplish, then let staff figure out what to recommend to you. Moratorium sounds all legal, but it's basically saying we will or will not enforce our code. I trouble over that, although that has been what we have effectively done by allowing the existing food truck to park in the right of way in front of Journal Plaza. Nobody's died yet, personally, I believe that's, God, this, I, I'm not against food trucks, and they've worked out great for your area. That to me seems like the worst intersection in town to place anything in the right of way, but so be it. Give us an idea of what you want. The consistency I've heard so far tonight is make it clear, you can put them on private property, loud and clear. Number two, over the past few years, several of us have discussed, what about around Stewart Park? Those are not thoroughfares, county is not at all involved, there's plenty of room to park, there's plenty of park to go sit and eat, and there's a restaurant. That's not gonna answer, um, Michael's question of what to put there, I get that, but those two issues we could bring back in an ordinance pretty darn quick that could designate, comma, and then a blank to say, tell us where else you want to designate, um, and we can do that at first reading, uh, bring it through the next L P A. I'm not thinking of a year out, I'm thinking we need to expedite this, simply because it's gotten pretty exciting to everybody involved. Then I'm gonna get out of the way and let y'all decide what to do about the one in front of Journal Plaza, that's, that's gonna be a tough issue.
Let's, let's, don't forget also, even our Christmas parade, there are vendors set up on the north side of Interlake with food. The Caladium Festival, they have food trucks, what'd they have, six or eight of them last year?
And then the Halloween event.
I mean, supposedly the, the roads are blocked off, but it's still public parking.
Right.
And, uh, we've got our country fair coming up here in, in just a few weeks. There's, there are vendors that set off, off the circle. I mean, this, this encompasses a, a lot of different things that we need to, uh, uh, address and, and look at.
And I agree, liability is the top of the list.
That's my top.
What always concerned me, in addition to the propane tank, is if I eat at a local restaurant and get food poisoning, I know who to go to. Where the hell's food truck the next day? They're gone, I, I would, I, I don't know the state law, I know we are preempted to a degree, he's absolutely correct about that, but I would hope we can at least track who's behind the food truck and where they live in the event they do damage to our citizens. Good, I just want them on file here. That, that's great, but I want a copy of the license here. We can't get a copy of the state license?
I mean, we could ask, but we're not, we're not allowed to require them to register with us.
I didn't, I just want to see their license.
We can't require that, that's what Dana's saying, we can't require that.
Please, if we're gonna talk, come, come to the podium.
I had one of the nonprofits say that if the food trucks come back again to the Caladium Festival next year, they don't even need to set up, they, they can't compete. They, each of them sell a specialty food, and then food trucks do a variety, and they said, why should they go when they didn't make much money this year because of the food trucks coming in, and they can offer so much more, and they, they're, and then the money leaves. And they're here to try to help their organization and their people, and they said, why should we go? What, let's just then turn it over to them, and let the people take the money out of our area and spend it somewhere else.
I think that's probably a different conversation, but I agree with you, because they never used to let food trucks in, it was all about the local charities doing that. So whoever made the decision to let the food trucks in, you know, go after them. Well, food trucks are all licensed, they all have insurance, the property owner at Journal Plaza has copies of those insurance. I believe he's a named insured on those policies. So all the vehicles that you need for the protection, I believe, are in place. You can find out who they are, we do maintain a schedule, it's even published on our website, so you can see who was there when. So we have a record of who it was, if you get a bad hot dog, please let me know, I'll help you track it down.
So basically what we're saying that we would like to do right now is to just let everything lie at the moment until we can come back and, and work it through, workshop it through, or whatever we need to do, right?
I would rather do that than try to make a decision on the fly. With a commitment though to bring something back, expedited.
If it doesn't put you in a bad position to.
Well, she's already in a bad position, because we've been saying, don't enforce our code, because it, it works, I, I get it. Everybody over at Journal Plaza is happy, somebody's gotta take a hard look at that for a long term.
And frankly, it's not just the Journal Plaza, um, we do as much as an area, not just the Journal Plaza, but the shops on Main, to draw people to Lake Placid, and if you talk to people that have visited Lake Placid, one of the main reasons that they like our downtown is because the Journal Plaza happens to be the social center of town. And then part of the formula that makes that work are food trucks. So yeah, we'll lose an element of that, it won't hurt my business, Ellie and Joey will stay up longer, and they'll cook different nights for us, but it does lose an element of character that we've developed down there for over three years now that people do like, and not just the people in Lake Placid, but all people that travel here from afar, across the country. We have people, foreigners, telling us, wow, we wish, wish they would do that here. We have people from as far away as Sebring saying, I wish they would do something like this in Sebring. So we have created something, and yes, we, we don't want to lose an element of that, but that's obviously your, your job.
Totally agree that it's worked, if I may just, and I'll quit, I promise. The question's how to make it work safely in my mind, is there any other place other than right at that intersection to park the food truck?
There is, there is on private property, a concrete pack in the rear of the building. The problem with that, our food trucks, is our experience drops in sales, one of them shared their numbers, they were down over fifty percent, because their presence up front is like a billboard. People do see it, it draws in traffic, people who might not have been coming down to see our band, see the food truck, stop, have some food, hear the band, and stay, so yeah, it's, there's good synergy there, but yes, the drive-by traffic of the food trucks are important.
What about the public parking lot across the street?
It's across the street, and wish we had flashing lights on every crosswalk, but it's, it's not gonna be the same. The billboard that you see for an auto dealership that's ten miles away is not the same as the food truck in front of the entertainment district.
I, I, I get it, you get more public exposure if you park in the middle of the road. No, no disagreement.
We don't know, because we haven't had any parking in the middle of the road yet.
Well, I think where your parking is in the right of way, I shouldn't have said middle, that's a little loose language, but you do get the idea. Parking in the road right of way gives you better expo, or somebody, better exposure, and to me, across the street in the parking lot would be safe.
Well, it's actually pretty protected there, because if you look at your parking that runs up to the loading zone, then there's the loading zone, then there's more parking. So these trucks are actually pulled back in as far, if not further, than those cars that are parked there in the spaces, they're sticking out more than the food trucks are.
Not gonna be my decision to make, Michael, I'm just.
No, I'm just sharing, just sharing information with everybody who might, might not be as familiar with where the trucks are parking.
Should we, what do you think about, you obviously have ex, I'm sorry, I'll shut up in just a minute.
No, you won't, you could say.
What do you, you think about, um, let's say they went down and parked in front of Main Street, America?
Is there a loading zone there?
No, but there's public parking, so we're, you're saying no in public parking, just in loading zones.
Sure. And if somebody on Interlake has a similar situation where it doesn't obstruct traffic, doesn't take parking places, sure, why wouldn't you consider that?
Because we're not gonna solve, I don't think we have time to be brainstorming on here, there, and this. A couple comments I want to make, um, is, you know, to Mr. Noel's point, is some people see the food truck and they get takeout. They just stop, take out, and take it home to eat, so you have a variety of clientele. A lot do visit the Plaza, have a cocktail, you know, wine, a beer, and, um, frequent the food truck. So I, I think there's a lot of value that the food trucks are. By moving it over to Stewart Park is not gonna give the same, because the main draw is either I'm taking it home, I'm gonna enjoy the music, and I'm gonna enjoy the stores that are open there, I'm gonna buy from the food truck, and I'm gonna sit at those picnic tables and enjoy what's going on, you won't get that same from Stewart Park. I, you all know that my son lives out in California, I frequent there quite a bit, and there's some breweries we go to that, you know, we love. And what we love about them is similar. And what we love about them is, similar to what Mike has, they don't serve food. They have the picnic tables, but in that location are a number of restaurants. They don't have the food trucks there. But the brewery itself lets you know which restaurants. You pick up the phone, you place an order. And in this case, six of us can, one gets chicken, you know, one gets Mexican. So there's different restaurants that we get the takeout within a few stores. We walk back and we continue to enjoy the beers. And I talked to Ken LeBlanc, and I said, you know, the feedback I get a little opposed to it is our restaurants, that they feel they're competing with a food truck. Well, not so. And so what Ken and I talked about is, I shared with him what they do and breweries that I visit. And I said, would you be open to just having Shoney's? The Puerto Rican restaurant across the street, Morton, Morty and Edna's, but the local restaurants menus available so people know, I got the food truck, but not necessarily everybody in your party wants a hamburger that night. Maybe they want a pizza. And Ken even volunteered, yeah, I'll even put up the type of board with those menus to help promote more the other establishments, not just their menu, but their hours. Because you hear a lot, well, the other ones aren't open at night. Okay, so maybe they will, maybe they won't. But if we promote, that's a gathering point. That, you know, area is a gathering point for people to come. And if we promote the other restaurants menus, the hours, and a phone number, I think we can expand it to kind of compromise for everybody. Now, the location, again, the liability is my biggest concern, and I don't, of insurance to protect ourselves. But I don't think elsewhere in the town we have loading zones. So maybe that loading zone created what's, what could be a good thing for giving additional food, a variety of food to people, and then bringing people into that area. That area is hopping, whether we like it or not. I love going through. I see the lights. I see the people sitting out. Can't believe in the cold weather, they're still sitting out. But the variety that's up there, and I went there with my family when they came in. Some of them went in to the Owl. They had the charcuterie and the wine. I took the grandkids and we ordered a pizza, and then we got a hot dog. So we had like six of us, and we're eating three different establishments food, but we're sitting at one picnic table. That's the beauty of that location. So I, I think what Ken was accepting that he would take on to help with the local restaurants, more awareness. I think that's a great idea.
We, we can't solve the thing tonight. My intention was to somehow bridge the time span between we can have the code reviewed. Maybe we revise it, maybe we don't. I'm just trying to bridge the time between now and six months or nine months from now.
My name's Elizabeth Acevedo. I'm the, one of the owners of Morty and Edna's.
Can you bring the microphone down a little? There you go.
Hi. We support 1 million percent having food trucks out there. Not only is it beneficial, it does attract people. But as a restaurant there, it does create other options because not everybody wants to have what we have. When I don't have a food truck out there, we're insanely busy, which is great. However, with the food truck out there, it does alleviate for our otter, myself, even the ice cream shop. We don't get slammed, and there is enough for everybody to go around. On the nights when we're at capacity, where we have an event going on, we love having a food truck there. Because not only do you have the options, but then again, that gives us some relief as well where I'm not feeding all the masses. And like she said, it's like having like an outdoor food, uh, food court, which I think it's amazing. Because like she said, you sit at a bench, he's eating this, she's eating that. And it's so worldly is the best way that I could describe it. So we back it. We love it. I'll always ask Michael, who's out there? We'll support them 1 million percent. And whatever we have to do to be able to get them that opportunity, because this could be the opening for them to have their own brick and mortar in the future. So I just want to extend that courtesy like it was extended to us where we came from nothing, and then suddenly we were given this opportunity to do what we're doing right now. So I support it 1 million percent, as I said. And anything that we can do to help that and keep that culture, we would love to be a part of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess if you come up with ideas, just get it to staff and see what we can.
And in the meantime?
In the past three months, it seems to be working. What do we need to do different?
What is working?
We, everybody's just left it alone and kind of enforced most of it, I guess, on the vending, but we...
What do you need from us? What do you need from us tonight, Dana? Anything?
This is Ms. Eberhart's item.
Is it acceptable just to let things even keel for the next, whatever, six months? Or is it going to be, is she in a position that you have to enforce the code?
I, I have been tasked with enforcing the code. I am the supervisor of code enforcement. I'm hiring, I'm working on hiring a code officer right now. I do believe it is in my purview, and it is my responsibility to enforce the code as written. The only reason it's been left this way, since I first initiated the conversation with the Journal Plaza is because I have been out a code officer, but I did send them a letter a week or two ago asking them to please comply with the code. I don't believe in not enforcing the code.
I think what we're saying is we want you to not enforce the code as it's written right now for a specific period of time with reference to food trucks in our town.
In loading zones.
In, in, in loading zones in our town.
Okay.
So I would make, if I need to make a motion to that effect, I've just made it. I'm going to disagree because basically we could tell Mark, hey, if somebody's parking wherever, just don't give them a ticket. Because, you know, I don't think you can ask somebody to do their job, and it's the law, and say, break the law. And, and okay, we're going to decide which laws you break.
Just to give you some clarification on this, you're actually creating a horrible ethical dilemma for her and putting her in an extremely difficult position. There either needs to be the moratorium to stop the enforcement, or we're going to go forward with enforcement. You can't balance in the middle. There is no middle ground there. You have to do one or the other.
So, but we can implement a mo, a moratorium on enforcement?
Yes, you can. As a council, that's your purview. But by, by saying Dana, don't enforce that without a moratorium, you're putting her in a horrible ethical dilemma. And it's going to come back and bite her, and you cannot put her in that position. It's not right to ask her to do that.
Exactly. And that's why I phrase it as a moratorium. With provisions, with certain provisions within the moratorium defining what the moratorium applies to.
And, and the length of time for the moratorium, yes. Well, so you're doing a moratorium to break the law. Now, see, again, I'm going to say, we have put off doing the banners and doing the signs because we're waiting for the, the process to go through to change the law, because we can't be breaking the law when we're not making everybody else, and we're not letting anybody else do it. I just don't, I'm sorry. I, I think we need to go through the process. I'm sorry. Because you're asking, okay, let's tell Mark over here, you know, don't give tickets out in the school zone because we're getting too many complaints, okay? And I, I just don't see that. Let's do a moratorium on tickets for 30 days. I, I think that if, if we're going to get picky like that, I want to see you come to the house on my street that we've been complaining about for code enforcement. There's two houses now that we've been complaining about for this whole time, and I've seen nothing there, and I see no paper trail. So if we're going to, if we're going to nail her on all this code enforcement, I got a lot of things for you to do, okay? So I'm going to go back to our parliamentary procedure that we try to operate in here. I have a motion. There's a second. Where are we? If you don't agree with it, you vote against the motion. But there's a motion on the floor, and a second.
And would you repeat your motion?
The motion is to, is to implement a moratorium on new roadside vending permits, including those for food trucks, as governed by sections 117-16 through 117-19 of the town code. The moratorium would last for a defined period, and I'm going to say 180 days because we need time to allow for a thorough review and potential revision of these code sections.
I would second, I would second, but would I have some revisions?
I'm sorry?
I would second, but I would like to add a little more to it.
Go ahead.
And that, well, first of all, it does not, uh, it, it's limited to food trucks, and it does not obstruct traffic.
Okay.
And they have all the proper state licensing and permitting.
Go ahead.
And insurance.
And insurance.
You cannot do that in a moratorium. I, I love you, but you, I, I know your heart is pure on that one, but you can't have an affirmative moratorium. You can stop enforcement, but you can't require, comma, provided you do blah, blah, blah. I, I, I don't.
I agree with you too, but if we can't do that, we can't do that.
And then we just separately ask the Journal Plaza who coordinate the food trucks to make sure that they have in place the, the items, which they do.
Currently, food trucks are required to have their permits anyway. We don't need to add that in there. If we go up and ask them for their permits, they're required to provide them.
Okay.
It, it's not something that we have to do. They already have to provide that. Also, if it is obstructing traffic, it's not allowed. Anyway, that's covered under state statute, not town ordinance.
Right, so we don't have to mention that?
No.
Okay.
But insurance, I mean, and, and he has that, but we just, as part of this, verbalize to him.
Okay, well then I will, I will...
Does the insurance protect him or the town?
Well, that's...
I think it probably protects the food truck.
No, he said that they're listed as a... Yeah. No, that would be helpful.
Before we, uh, moratorium something, let's make sure we've got named insurers. I agree with, you can't block the flow of the traffic, but you said one other thing earlier that I'm not so sure I agree with.
Doesn't moratorium require...
Let's come back to the motion you originally said, and that, we talked about just a moment, and that would be moratorium on enforcement in loading zones. That gets him what he's been doing. It leaves everything in a status quo until we can get this thoroughly reviewed. I'm sorry, I don't have all the answers tonight. I, I just don't.
I don't think we can have the answers, but, okay.
And I will take away my amendments to you on yours and go straight forward.
So, so we're back to implement a moratorium on, on new roadside vending permits? No.
Enforcement of existing ordinance in loading zones.
Okay, so implement a moratorium on enforcement of existing, help me, ordinances, on existing codes for food trucks.
Just those.
Just those in those codes, 117-16 through 117-19, for food trucks in loading zones. For 180 days.
Chief, does that cross anything you can think of?
You're good?
And a second.
You're good, Michael?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Before there's any more discussion, anything from the audience? Bring it back to the podium. Hold the council.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eberhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
No.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
All right, looks like we're going to be a few minutes yet. Let's go ahead and take ten.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
That's okay. Raise it. Next. I'm very shocked. But you know what? My [inaudible 00:02:38]. Even after getting back here.
We advertise it good.
Even if we have a long workshop, I think maybe we can knock it out on one. I think you lose interest after two. I agree.
Yeah, so we planned for one, we advertise it good, we spread the word through the associations that are of interest and knock it out in one. It goes to the LPA and then it comes to us for two meetings.
Can I make a comment? It just may with the times, if you see there's different times because some people who work may not be able to attend a day workshop.
You skipped the whole month of March.
Well, because my thought process was that after I elicited all the feedback, that would give me my time to do the work.
So, we're looking at Tuesday, February 18?
Is that a Tuesday or Monday?
It's a Tuesday. The 18th is a Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Okay, so Monday, the 17th, I think we're more looking at.
Monday is the 17th.
Well, if Thursday is the 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, Monday would be the 18th.
No, Monday's a...
Give him this.
No.
My date must be wrong.
No, you're...
You're in the wrong year.
The 17th is Monday, the 18th, he's in 2024.
17th, the math ain't mathin'.
Okay, yeah, 17th then.
Okay.
Monday? At night?
February 17?
Yeah. I was contemplating two methods of doing it. You all saw how it worked for the year process for Highlands County. We all attended that. I don't think I'll have enough staff to be able to do that. But there's this really cool app that I was thinking of using where you can ask questions to the audience in real time and then anonymously puts the results up there so it could be like an interactive meeting. So, just letting you know my thoughts on that. Other than that, that's all I needed, so thank you.
I'm sorry, February 17th, is that 5:30 PM?
Oh, yes.
What's the time on that?
I agree with 5:30.
Are we 5:30?
Oh, I see what the problem was. The 14th is a wrong date.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then that's it, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the town administrator.
So, on the Christmas parade parking, the statement of issue is there and some of the key considerations that we have discussed has been including implementing a policy of no overnight parking and budgeting for pedestrian barricades to enhance the safety and organization of the parking. The chief is currently in the process of obtaining quotes for the necessary barricades and he may be able to provide a little additional information on the importance of this with the recent drive into pedestrians and things of that nature. Or, not pedestrians, I'm saying that wrong.
Vehicles backing into pedestrians and the floats through this year's parade. It was terrible. I actually thought we were going to lose Mr. and Mrs. Claus at the end of the parade. It was so bad with people backing out, almost hitting them. I actually had to put my patrol car between a couple vehicles because they didn't, apparently didn't see the lights or hear the siren and were still coming at them. So, I had to put my patrol vehicle between them and the car backing up to get them to stop. It actually, if you looked from when the parade started along Interlake Boulevard, as I led the parade, there was plenty of room for floats to move down Interlake Boulevard before I came through at the end. It had moved out to where there was barely enough room for floats to get through from where people were throwing candy and kids were in the road and instead of going all the way back, they were sitting in the roadway. It's extremely dangerous to have that there. My recommendation is to remove parking along Interlake and put up pedestrian barricades to prevent this from happening in future years.
I agree.
I do too. I think we've been dodging the bullet.
This was serving more of an informational, so that you know we are working on it and what some of the steps are that we're taking.
So, you don't need a decision from us, you can just move forward? And would you do it the same as like, I think you had signs up that said the day of the parade that the road is closed at a certain time?
No, I would actually put up pedestrian barricades the night before to ensure that vehicles were not parked there and I would recommend putting those barricades up the night before to block that off completely so that vehicles do not get in there.
So, there would be no parking on Interlake?
The day of the parade.
The Saturday of the parade?
Yes.
Because what they're doing is they're coming and they're leaving it overnight so that they reserve their spot and they're driving the next day in another vehicle so that they can walk to the vehicle that allows them to be up by the parade.
Some of them do, but some of them like to get out right away.
Do we need to do Main Street also, Chief?
Main Street, we don't have that problem on. We really don't have that problem on Main Street. I'm not sure why, but we don't. I would recommend the pedestrian barriers along Main Street as well, just to keep the crowds back.
Yes, I think we need that. It's so dark on Main Street.
I have a couple different options I'm looking at right now for the pedestrian barricades. We could go with what you would traditionally see in Times Square, the metal barricades that are used to keep people back. Or, we can go with more of a traffic cone style with a red rope or tape to keep them back. Right now, the prices I'm getting and the quotes I'm getting, the metal barricades are extremely expensive. It may behoove us to start with maybe a couple of those and use the cones and rope in the interim until we can get more.
Is there any opportunity that Sebring or Avon Park have something that we can just borrow?
I have an actual email from our FDLE field representative. This has actually become a huge issue among law enforcement recently. The only place that has vehicle barriers or barriers like that right now that we could borrow from would be Fort Myers. And I do not believe that we would want to put the cost up, that we would have to transport all that up here.
Yeah, I was thinking as each of them have their activities, if there's something...
Nobody's really ever put that stuff out.
But you bring up a good point is it's very dark on Main Street. I mean, we can't even read what the signs on the side of cars are. Main Street is very dark. I don't know if there's ever been a discussion on temporary lighting or something, you know, for the parade because, you know, there's a few sections there. The kids, they all go to get their candy, right? And it's just dark.
I'll mention that at the chamber meeting.
Okay. I mean, I view it from Main Street, but it's always dark over there and I'm trying to figure out why and I think it's because the trees in the median are blocking a lot of the light and the businesses, a lot of the businesses on the one side don't have the lighting.
The lighting on Main Street is down the median. The light of Interlake is on each side.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And that's exactly the problem.
Okay, good.
Chief, you're talking about closing down Interlake the night before?
I'm saying we definitely need to close it down, yes. It would, to set up the pedestrian barriers...
What about all the businesses on Interlake that are open Saturday?
I, that's one of those things we would have to deal with. I mean, if we allow people to pull in there and park when we start to put up the pedestrian barricades, they're either going to run them over to get out or they're going to leave their vehicles there, which is going to cause a whole nother issue.
They, okay, so one side of the road is closed off anyway, okay? And so then, so then everybody comes and parks their trucks and it's, there's no parking anyway. There's no parking. The people come and park their trucks and then the other side is prohibited. So, the businesses really, I mean, it's the same, it's the same. And then some businesses have parking and some people don't. But it's, there is no parking on Interlake because the people bring their trucks and they start leaving them, I mean, early.
No, no, they, I mean, when you want to do business, you park on the other side of the street. I mean, I haven't noticed on parade day that the whole south side of Interlake is completely filled.
I live there and I'm telling you it is and there's no parking.
Actually, we start at...
A lot of people don't, yeah, even, yeah, even the day before.
We start at 3:00 PM, the day of the parade. We start at 3:00 PM and put an officer on Interlake to get people to move cars who have come in and tried to reserve even the parking spaces that says no parking in. So, it is on both sides. We have to come in and actually call people to come get their cars because if you don't, they're going to leave them there.
We would start early with being able to educate the public, putting it out there. So, to get that out there. I would even venture to say we make sure they know overnight, they know that there will be no overnight parking by putting it in the newspaper and letting them know that they'll be towed. I mean, they may get busy, but I...
Well, you, we can put those, I call them the little orange signs that says no parking and you have the times, you could start putting those even out earlier, days earlier, something.
Well, he does that anyway.
We try to get those out earlier anyway, but it...
He does that the day before.
I'm also going to recommend that we also begin looking at vehicle barriers on the side streets and main thoroughfares for the parade. Right now, all we have are small barricades that we put out there that will not stop a car from driving through there.
I notice that. And then also these notices, let's get them into the businesses. Maybe they can put, because one, they need to know that it's going to be no parking and maybe if there's even a sign on their window or something as customers come in during the week, oh, okay, no parking on Saturday. Okay, good?
Good. I think it's out of order on here opposed to what's on our agenda. Let me skip around. Public risk, staff training. This was again, another information around the recent civil rights concerns and complaints that have been brought to the town's attention, highlighting the need to ensure that all staff are equipped to handle the matters appropriately and follow the necessary steps. In response, the town will be conducting training for staff to address these issues and promote awareness. We currently have two quotes that were in the packet. Again, this is really just to bring awareness that we are being proactive. Rachel Osborne, our HR director, also finance director, is seeking a third quote so that we will have it. Either way, it's under the threshold where I can just go ahead and initiate, but we wanted you all to be aware of the steps that we've taken. Budget amendment for Lake June Park dugout roofs. This was put on here by Harry. Our facility director.
I got, with the request of the mayor, some updated estimates for the dugout roof replacements at the ballfields. One of them came back the same amount. The guy said he would, for American Roofing, said that he would do it for the same cost since he already estimated it. That said he would eat the difference in the cost. That one was for $34,500. That's $6,500 over the budgeted amount. The next one, Mid Florida. They gave me two different estimates. I'm not sure, the mayor requested one from him. I'm not sure what they talked about on that one. But I have both of them in the packet. One came in at 47, 709. That's the one that you and Mid Florida spoke about. The other one that brought it up to being able to ensure that the manufacturer warranty would be covered came to 39, 749. And then the last one came in at 47, 160.
So, Harry, which of these is going to meet our needs the best?
I think all of them do. The cheapest one is 34,500. So, the three bids, estimates, the one from Platinum, one from Mid Florida and one from American Roofing are all pretty much the same. American Roofing did not put as much information on theirs as the others, but he ensures that the 25-year metal warranty will be upheld by the manufacturer and that was the question that the mayor had at the last meeting. I'm not recommending you go with that one. We're able to read all of them over, so it's just...
So, you're recommending that we go with the 34,000?
I'm not recommending either one of them. I'm just, I put them all in the packet so everybody could read them and make a decision from there. I mean, I think that one is fine, but also I'm not a roofer. I rely on the mayor's information to me to...
I'm not a roofer either.
As long as, as long as he's willing to provide the manufacturer's warranty and he's going to give his warranty, I say no problem.
Are these reputable companies? Do we know anything about the companies though?
American Roofing's done repairs for us before.
Okay, so you've worked with them before? Good.
They do, they do require a 20%, non-refundable deposit. Two of the three companies require deposits, one does not.
I was trying to compare the, who is doing what and it's like apples and oranges. The American Roofing does not include replacing any rot.
They're replacing all the wood. It says right there.
Oh, all of it? Did I miss that?
It was in their original, yeah. He's following his original bid.
Okay.
It says pricing includes all lumber, purlings, replacement of all rotten wood, plywood. They don't have a limit on theirs on the sheets of plywood, the other two do.
Okay, oh, there it is, right in bold print. How could I miss it? Okay, okay. All right.
I assume you've got an agreement for them to sign or do you need one?
We need them to vote which one we're going to do.
Well, I wouldn't just sign a proposal.
No.
Okay.
So, we need a motion to make a budget amendment in order to accept that bid of $39,749.04? Is that what we're looking for here? What was your comment, Harry?
If that's the one you choose to go with.
Either one, any of them, we need a budget amendment.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. The question I had asked earlier was, okay, so I support getting these done, there's no issue there. But the two Miracle League ones, since the season's over, could that be delayed into the next fiscal year?
I did go down there and look at it.
And I asked them what condition those were in.
One of them's completely rotted, they're in the same...
Okay, well, then that, there's the answer is no. So, we need a budget amendment. So, first we have to decide which one we're going to go to then, I think, then we do the budget amendment of...
And the longer you wait, the worse they're going to get.
Right. What, what did you budget? How much did you budget?
28.
28? So, basically if we go with the 34,5, we need a $6,500 budget amendment.
And the difference is the Miracle League...
No, I asked him what he, no, this one's 34, American Roofing.
The Miracle League wasn't included in the original estimate.
Right, that's why.
Which would bring it to $6,500 more than what we budgeted.
Go to page 167. I mean, I'll make the motion if that's, unless any, I'll make a motion that we go with American Roofing to replace the dugouts at Lake June Park and approve a $6,500 budget amendment.
I've got a motion in a sec. Any further comments in the podium? Seeing that? How about the member of the audience? Bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Harry, thank you for all the work. I know you've done overtime on trying to do this twice, so thank you.
Okay, I think there's one more.
Is that correct?
Yes. 6D4, Interlake Boulevard previous concrete parking stall installation.
So, this hopes to resolve an isolated drainage problem, but more or less, we're going to use it as a pilot for other opportunities in town that we see. So, there's a section of parking stalls along Interlake that were disrupted during the pipe bursting project. They were disrupted because they have a couple valves and we looked at repaving and it was in their contract to repave the area. But it was brought to our attention that the stalls and the configuration of the parking floods excessively. It always has. It floods in that location. So, in order to look at, or in looking at various solutions, a lot of which were very costly, this seemed like the least impact and presents unique opportunities to highlight some of this best management practices and unique materials that are at our advantage. So, there's a product called Pervious Concrete. It's a concrete-based material. It looks like concrete, it's just, it has a lot of voids, so it's more like a Rice Krispy treat. And when placed in the right manner by the right certified contractor, using the right mix and done correctly, it will work very, very well. In my previous employment, I spent over two years marketing and promoting concrete products through the state and marketing and promoting the use of BMPs through the water management districts. In fact, every single one in the state. So, this was a product that they used in order to meet some of the criteria for nitrogen and phosphorus loading and some treatment of the water before it goes into the waterways. So, before you is a motion to allow us to engage with excavation point to bring one of these specialty contractors in and pave three parking stalls with this material. And as we look to the future, we'd be able to look at these stalls and evaluate them and their performance and see if they're appropriate for other locations. And I'm open to any questions. I know that's kind of broad-based, but, and I've got a plan, I don't think it made it.
Do you have a picture of what we're talking about and of what a pervious? Here's my concern, right? Three stalls and how many are in a row? And now, it's the optics on our main, on our main street, we've got different parking stall structures.
If we were to look at the...
And they're $6,000, that's structure, right? $18,000 for three, so that's, I'd like to see what it looks like. And then my concern is three out of how many in that section and how will that even look?
The surface will look very similar to what's out there today. It's not a surface that you can paint because of its porosity. There are other materials you could use. You could use chewed up rubber, you can use asphalt, I've seen glass. The most successful pavement material with the highest durability in public right of way in this application, I feel confident that the concrete product would do it. If we look at some of the coloring of the main drive and the parking stalls along Interlake, they already have a different color to them because of the paving that was done. You've got a resurfacing along the main and then the parking stalls are kind of left and, you know, we're repaving some of them and not repaving others. So, it would look slightly different, but it's not going to cause any type of sight visibility, you know, concerns while driving. You know, the biggest difference is going to be dry. It will work.
So, you said you can't paint it?
No, ma'am.
We can't paint?
You can, I mean, you can paint a little bit of it, but you'd be...
Parking stall lines on it?
Yeah, it's like taking a Rice Krispy treat and putting a piece of paper over it and then expecting the water to go over the Rice Krispy. You know, the water has to go through the surface of the pavement to go through it.
What you're saying is the pavement makes it impervious. You can paint the stripe off or can't?
You can paint a stripe, but it won't retain, it won't, the water won't go down where the thermoplastics...
A little bit becomes impervious.
Yeah, and then if you stripe it, make sure you only stripe it once. You can't redo the stripe. You can't take it off once you've applied it. It's a very coarse, very rough surface.
So, you can paint it, but you should not paint it?
You can paint it.
You can paint it, but you should not.
I would recommend painting the parking stalls. It's a four-inch white stripe. It's not going to affect the porosity and, you know, but you wouldn't want to paint the entire surface black or darker, darker gray to match the existing surrounding areas. The surface can be seen in a lot of other uses. I think in Coquina Beach or some of other locations, there's lots of, lots of various applications that we could look at, pictures.
Yeah, I'd like just to say this is in front of my place. In 21 years I've lived there and it used to flood in front of my house, but I put, that's why I put that big porch on and I filled up, okay? But it floods out there and I've fallen out there because once, once the silt, once it finally drains down, and it's about this deep, okay? Because if you look, if you came over in front of my house, all that water from across the street and then from Hartzell's there, it comes to that corner and it doesn't go anywhere but there. But once that water goes down, there's a very fine, silty, black stuff and I've fallen because it's like being on marbles. You cannot get your footing. I'm pretty agile, but I'm just saying, I fell, keyed my car. If I'd been an old person, which I am, but anyway, I felt I didn't break a hip. But I'm saying, it is not, it's just like, you can't use any of that parking in front of my place, okay? What I was very excited about was because I don't think there's a way to fix it unless we tear up the bed, but then it's just going to move the water down the street into the lakes. So, this is what they're using, mentioning that it's used at the parks now. They ripped up all the pavement, they put this down because instead of the water sheeting off and causing pollution in the golf and in the lakes, it's going down. What made me really excited about this is it's not just because I might not have flooding in front of my place anymore, it's down by where the historic depot is. There's almost no way to fix that. We've tried to crack that nut for a long time and if this works, can you imagine? We don't have to put in big retention. This is the other thing, you don't have to put in big retention.
We also have parking that we're proposing along South Main with other developments. So, this could set a standard. We've got more developments in downtown areas that I'm hoping to include this material. So, this is kind of a pilot project that's, that, it's going to change the town because I feel in my heart that it's going to work. So, I'm really pushing for it. I've seen it work. I promoted it for years. We can, the Florida Concrete Products Association, they paved their entire parking lot in this material. And when we did presentations, we would send a ready-mix truck, like in the photo I had with the, with the rainbow, one of those trucks. We filled the entire thing up with water. We brought it to the pavement. We brought everybody outside. We told the operator, now let it rip. And he opened the gate, all the water left immediately and it just went underneath the pavement. It didn't do anything.
Yeah, I've seen it, I saw it years ago in a magazine. It was like a city, picture a city alleyway with buildings on each side and there was nowhere for the water to go and the alleyway was just flooded. They put this in and there was nothing. So, why are we doing it at Interlake and Magnolia when possibly we should be doing it in front of the depot?
When we originally talked about, and I am advocating for this, I mean, I can't even have my business, nobody can park in front of, it's been going on 21 years, okay? So, anyway, but that's a larger project. This is a very small area to make sure it's going to work.
Yep.
Because I have the same flood problem that they have and instead of going in and spending a lot more money on a big area, let's see if it works.
And, you know, before I convince all these developers that I'd like to use it, I'd like to convince the council to use it, I mean, we really need to see it. I mean, we towed about our high infiltration rates, we're on a ridge, all of our ponds never have standing water. We can really take advantage of that. I mean, there's some engineering, you know, materials that, that do take advantage of that. The pervious concrete, in my opinion, is the best resource in this location. Uh, the pervious concrete, in my opinion, is the best resource in this location. There are other porous surfaces, but in coordinating with also the county engineer, uh, he agreed with me that this was the best application for this location. And we've applied for the permit and we've received it. So, we're kind of now coming to you because of the cost. It really wasn't in our budget.
How much more than concrete is it? I mean, it seems costly, right? $6,000 a parking spot?
Well, if you look at the cost of a, uh, of a three-by-four concrete manhole and then to move the water from one area to another, I'd need three of them. Uh, concrete reinforced pipe in conflict with the 12-inch water main would take right-of-way, land acquisition. To move waters is expensive.
So, is, you started-
So, this is like an alternative that, it's like a, you know, you, you park on your pond is the theory.
So, you started out and said that the pipe bursting di- isn't repairing it? And it sounds like they should, the pipe bursting company? It was part of the contract, so are they going to give us funding from that that we could use for this? And, and that, to help reduce the costs?
I think there were some negotiations on the funding and how we moved some things around. I wasn't included on exactly that, but this project was slated to be retained for, uh, a different solution.
I don't, I don't understand what you, you mean.
If we were to pave this area, it would have maintained the flood. So, we identified it as a concern to try to address the issue, so we didn't pave it.
But I thought as part of the pipe bursting, they were to pave it. Forget the water and the issues that we had, but they were responsible for paving it.
Correct.
And now we're saying, "Well, let's wait. Let's go a different alternative." So, my comment is that the savings from them not paving it, are they giving us those funds?
No, ma'am.
Because?
There was a negotiation in the contract for the funds. Maybe there was a change order on valves that wasn't included in the original bid.
To not pave three parking spots?
Kevin McCarthy was negotiating the contract and the bid items for this. So, I can't comment on what was exchanged for what. I can comment on a solution to solve the drainage concerns at this location. And I can provide the best recommendation to the council on to solve those solutions.
I just, I just feel like if Margaret Dear were in the audience tonight, we'd be hearing a, a lot about doing this down at the Historical Society because they have such issues there. And although they're not a business per se, um, they are, they, they are, you know, a, a, an entity in our town. And I know that there, there are concerns there as well. So, um, again, back to my original point.
Well, you're going to spend a lot more money. We're talking about a couple parking spaces and to see if it works, okay?
And I put emails-
In front of your whole, the parking lot. No, 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 it's, it's almost in front of the Purple Iris, right? I thought I was looking up Mag-
No, it's at the corner. I used to live there.
But it's, no, it says Magnolia and Inner Lake.
I've got a map of-
I know where it's at. I know where it's at. I used to live there. I know where it's at.
No, I don't think it is down there, right? Magnolia is on, on the west side of Hartzell's.
Yes, it's on the west side of Hartzell's, yes.
And that's not down by her.
No, I know. She's on the east side of Hartzell's. I know that. I used to live there. I know that.
So, so, I understand, and I think, Dennis, I think it's a creative idea, right? We've got a problem. It's torn up now.
Yep.
There's a interesting concept, but we're not 100%. Right, so here's the Hartzell's and the Purple Iris and all of this, right? Show me.
No. You're on the wrong side of the street.
But this isn't by Deborah Worley's. Deborah Worley's is on the other side.
This is north Magnolia. Miss Worley's would be right over here.
Yeah, right.
So, this is right in front of the attorney's office.
By Brantley's there?
Across from Brantley's.
This is Logan's?
This would be Logan's. This would be directly across the street, right?
Where's the three spots?
Right here. What's in red?
Which this is Hartzell's in there. What am I missing?
No, this is Hartzell's.
Hartzell's over there, gotcha. So, it is, it's in front of the, um,
Attorney.
The real estate company, gotcha.
Is that the only spots that aren't completed from the pipe bursting?
Yes, ma'am.
See, Joe, I think it's a creative idea that you're saying is, look at-
Hartzell's is actually too far.
We pave it.
I mean, it comes to this corner.
It's going to have drainage issues.
And floods back.
Here's a concept.
Well, my intent was-
It's an expensive concept. Me, to me, it's expensive, but if it's something that can help in the museum and other areas.
It's expensive compared to what?
Concrete paving?
But concrete paving would still flood.
But that's what I said. Other things considered, if you just look at the paving, it's expensive.
And I guess that's the, that's the intent, is that this is not, this is not a pavement project. This is a pilot project to solve our town's drainage infrastructure and flooding in the downtown corridor.
But that's the case, then to Nell's point, you could do it where you have the biggest flooding.
I agree.
I, what I'm saying is you're taking advantage of a hole that's already there and not paying the cost for the concrete to fix it and that.
The intent has always been to pave the train depot with this material in my mind's eye. But I can't convince, I, I can't show you how it works unless we see it in action.
So, why don't we see it in action there?
This is, oh, say it again?
So, why don't we see it in action there?
Yeah, so actually, like I said, I saw in the magazine, the before is an actors of an alleyway. And you have the, uh-
I could, I, I would love to put a plan together, anywhere you'd like. I, I was trying to solve-
A problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And save some money, so, right.
Yeah, so, you know, we could-
Because it's, we're, we're already doing the work in that area was part of the reason, is it's already being done. And so, this would finalize it because we've been getting questions, um, on what are we going to do now that we're doing all of the other improvements with the pipe bursting, putting in the plants? And are we going to fix this area as well?
So, it, yeah, it's good, but I don't need convincing.
Not mine.
I'm sorry.
It's, it, you, it's a demonstration project, but I do not need convincing.
Yeah.
You've seen it.
And Rachel, is Rachel there?
Yes, she's there.
Is this type of expense fine to put, take out of infrastructure? Because it's like, in a sense, repair?
Oh, if it's a overlay and this is, Dennis, this is for-
Parking stalls.
Parking stalls, okay. Yeah, as long as it's an overlay and it's a, a whole project, then it can be. But if he's just making patches and just fixing parts of it, then he cannot use infrastructure. But how he's presenting it, he can.
Okay. I'm fine with trying it. I mean, I, I would like to see a picture of it because, like I said, the optics, it concerns me that we got three. But to Councilwoman Worley, Worley's is like, they're always underwater and you can't see those parking spots anyway, so.
But if it works, they're not going to be underwater.
But if it works, then I, what he's saying, and, and I agree with the museum and elsewhere. Then, if it doesn't work, then we're not out anything. We wouldn't do it at the museum. If it does work, now we've got the pilot to do the museum. Versus do all the museum and find out it doesn't work.
Well, we, we could do three parking stalls with the museum and see if it worked there.
The museums isn't, well, but that means the cost to tear up the three spots. I think the difference is this is torn up.
Yeah.
This we need to repair.
Giving us any money for it.
Well, that's a difference. That's why I asked the question. That's a difference.
And the answer was no.
The answer was, it was negotiated for something else.
The answer's no.
Charlotte, can you just chase the answer to, um, the question on why the pipe bursting company isn't giving funds to repair that area?
I think the question is, is what does it look like? Is, oh, you're showing that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's that, but I mean, in, in the meantime.
But the, the damages there, my understanding was not because of the pipe bursting. Is that correct? From Harry-
I don't believe, it's been a historic flooding problem. It's not because of the pipe bursting.
But it's all torn up now.
Right now, and they didn't pave it, so now it's torn up and it needs to be fixed somehow. And I would really think that you all would, okay, you're going to improve Inner Lake and you're going to do all of that, and then you're going to leave this area that people can fall down in.
But I see what you're saying.
My, my comment was, we entered into a contract with this company to tear up sidewalks, put in the pipe, burst the pipes, right, and do all of that. And then it was to put in the curbs and pave everything, put it back in the condition that they started. In this section, we're not going to do that. Okay, fine. I, I like what he's saying. But my comment is, but we paid a company as part of a contract to do everything. They've decided not to do that one area. Feels to me, there should be some money coming back.
Ma'am, I'd like to point out to the fact, they've also done work that was not included in the bid. So, they installed valves that were not included. So, instead of receiving the change order, we have presented the council with no change orders on that project. Like you said, nothing has been presented, so I'm not sure the exact negotiations, but.
You're right and he's right. Normally, you would absolutely have a trade-off. I think, I, I know Kevin made some trade-offs to say, to get the valves. I believe, as I recall, that there were some, that during construction, they discovered there were a couple additional Ts where lines came off that they didn't know about, so they had to install valves. And that would cost another X dollar, so he said, "I'll do this if you'll do that."
Okay, I just want that answer. That's all. Fair enough. Right. But, right, I don't want us all speculating in that. That's all that, you know, just to hold our vendors accountable.
In, in the-
And I'm fine with that. If they did that, I think that's, that's good, but should be documented.
In that exact location, you'll find three valves that they were repairing. So, that's why the pavement was ripped up. They had to reconstruct those valves at that location. So, that's, that's why the pavement was ripped up and they reset the valves.
That's why I didn't have water for like two weeks at night and, and I couldn't, I was, went through like 30, what? 45 days of not sleeping and it all comes together right there from the plant to that. That's where it all comes to, right there.
Do you need a motion? What do we need here? I, I mean, I support a pilot program.
And, and I mean, I was going to show you the photo.
As long as it looks good, show me where it's at.
The, the benefit of having me on staff is that I, I, I was marketing and promoting through the Concrete and Products Association for years. So, I have extensive experience. If you guys have additional questions. Um, I was an RMC, uh, uh, pervious concrete, uh, teacher. I went out and taught the certification classes to the contractors. So, the gentleman that I invited is an RMC, National Recognized Ready-Mix Concrete Installer for pervious concrete that I certified myself. So, I called him and asked if he'd like to do the work, if he's still in business, coordinated with Excavation Point to, to manage the project. And so, um, you know, if you have any concerns or questions, you know, feel free to, to ask. I've got a, a design that didn't make the presentation, but.
Is this parking lot all the pervious? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, and it's flat. So, it acts like a pond. So, there's no grading changes. There's no ADA problems or, uh, challenges, I should say. So, uh, the entire parking lot is a flat surface. And we would park ready-mix trucks, uh, right here and full of water and just let the water, uh, discharge onto the pavement and a good show and tell. And this parking lot, I want to say now, is almost 15 years old or more.
So, do we need a motion? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve using pervious contract, um, parking stall, to use the pervious contract concept for three parking stalls on Inner Lake and Magnolia and a, um, a budget amendment of $18,742 out of the infrastructure fund.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Harry Nunn, let's take it to the audience again. Put a thumb up for me. All right, way to go. Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Everhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
No. No, it should be at the depot. No.
Councilmember Worley?
Yes.
Thanks, Dennis.
All right.
I just, um, I have an, it's in my, my report. I wanted to give an update on the police department. Eva, would you mind pulling that? Do we have the picture? Is it up here?
It's up there, um, in your, hover over your PDFs at the bottom.
I have it on my phone.
Oh, here it is. I see it now. Sorry, here it is.
I have it here. Do you want it?
What, the picture?
Okay.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, I have a picture. So, the progress continues on the new police department project with the following action items and updates that are currently underway. Utility and water main coordination. The town is to provide a fire flow test result for the hydrants on the west side of US 27. A surveyor is scheduled to be on site tomorrow for additional utility markings that were requested by Cool and Cobb. Um, the town is supposed to ensure that all utilities are marked and flagged before this date. So, they're supposed to be working on that. I know Kevin's not here, but he already had that in the works. Um, this is just a, a rendering. It's the design and building coordination. So, they were going to provide us with the rendering. They told us they would last week. They did. It is not for the site. It's just for, for town to be able to review the way that they planned for it to look. The current building plans would be shared with the police chief for coordination and any updates. The permit submissions have been submitted by Cool and Cobb to the state and water management district for approval. The utility design has been submitted to LPA. Comments from the town engineer and utility director have both been addressed and the county has completed its review. So, the next steps, we have full civil plan set that will be reviewed with the town planner, who will then initiate the commercial review process. Uh, we received USDA support, needed, they needed a letter of support and we did receive that from the county. Commissioner Arlene Tuck signed that and submitted it to us. We are scheduled for bi-weekly meetings and the next one is scheduled for January 22nd. So, it's to provide an update and let you see that it is moving forward. And then I have one other item that was in my packet that I just wanted to kind of highlight and hone in on a little bit quickly because I know everybody is tired. But I've had a lot of conversations with many people who believe that they are the town of Lake Placid. However, they're not the town of Lake Placid. They are in the green area that we see here, most of them. But it's very difficult to get them to understand that. And so, I wanted to bring it, I know there's not everybody here. Hopefully, if people listen in and then we, um, are going to put it on our website so that they can also see where boundary lines are because they will complain about things. They will ask us to take care of it, not realizing that the town of Lake Placid is really only comprised of about 2,400 people. They believe that if they are in the Lake Placid area with a zip code that's in this green area, that they belong to the town of Lake Placid. So, it's just for clarification purposes and to try to provide clarity and ensure that the residents are aware, that, you know, they understand who is responsible for what. That's all I have, folks. University of Florida, I've put these out on everyone's desk or on your, your, your seat. And there were others that were for people to get when they came in. But it's the Florida Lake Watch. They're seeking Highlands County volunteers. This is done through the University of Florida. It is a commitment. It's about a two-year commitment, but they need people to help with doing samples and things of that nature. They're looking for Highlands County residents who are ready to help them. Um, they said, roll up their sleeves and get their arms wet and help them to be able to get some of the mu- most, much-needed data for them to make better informed decisions about the lakes and our lake quality. So, everybody has that. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, anything from our department heads?
I just wanted to mention that the picnic table was ordered and it should be in this Wednesday for Devane Park, the one that was damaged. Uh, so, a brand-new one should be installed early next week at, at the latest. And, uh, if anybody's noticed- And if anybody's noticed that Devane Park hasn't looked the greatest, it's because every year we have ryegrass seeds spread, basically so it stays green throughout the winter time. So we, because of that, we have to stay out of that park for two to three weeks for it to take, take root and sprout. And we've just today started mowing it again. And I think end of last week, we did all the edging and weeding as normal and we'll be doing all the normal routine before the festival as far as pressure washing the sidewalks, the benches and repairing any power outlets that are shorted out on the light poles as usual. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Pauline?
Two comment items and then a question. First, I want to thank the mayor, Rachel and Dana for the Christmas party and everybody who participated. That was a lot of fun and, and for me personally, getting to know the staff and, and a lot of the employees. I mean, what a bunch of characters. And it just was a lot of fun, so thank you for that. And I think that I need, clearly the staff and all the employees enjoyed it too.
And we try to make it fun.
Yeah, yeah. And I want to thank Charlotte for all of the communication that she's given us. I, I mean, I, I appreciate the weekly updates. I appreciate texts because as we're out in the community, people are asking us questions. And, and there's nothing worse than being a council member with, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. So the information that you are providing us quite frequently is very much appreciated. And it does help us be knowledgeable about what's going on because there's a lot going on by the staff and they've gotta be overwhelmed with all the projects they're doing. So I just appreciate those updates and appreciate what all you do. The last is just a question, and maybe it's a question to Mr. Harris as the Make Lake Placid Beautiful. I've always been curious as to what's going on with the landscaping in front of the government center and around the flagpole. There is nothing and this is our showcase government center. So do we have a plan to put shrubs, flowers, something? And especially with, you know, the HDTV coming, you know, this is, this is the main area. This is our government center.
No, we've never undertaken a government center as a project. We've all talked about it a lot. Do you think the town would budget some money for it?
I think somewhere we need to budget money for it. I mean, to me,
I agree.
You know, every time, right, every time I walk up, I'm like, ah. So how do we, is that? Can?
Can't hear you, Harry.
Yeah.
I know you have the answer for this though, 'cause it's been in your director's report.
I thought at one time, before new council took over, that Ray was talking about putting in the budget for plantings and stuff at town hall.
The last I heard, they were, we were trying to wait until we got the police station built and then we were gonna do the landscaping all together. Which, yes.
Yeah, I'm more or less right up against the building though, in the flagpole. That's separate.
I've been asking that for two years.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, we're still a year and a half away or whatever for that building.
Yeah.
So Lake Placid Beautiful doesn't do that, like landscaping?
We haven't. We haven't. We focused on the roads.
Okay.
And remember, this is relatively new, our presence here. One of the things that I think that KLPB needs to bring forward to the committee is the proposal. You've heard me talking about kind of a long range plan. The first thing that I've listed in it, I've circulated it to the committee, rather, to Jennifer, to go to the committee, was what are we responsible for?
Yeah, that's important.
And which roads, which parks? And I think that needs to come back to this council and say, not so much that, this is the area of growth and make that decision. Then, then let's get on with it.
Yeah.
To me, one of the big-
No, I was gonna say, I don't care who does it. I just, we need to get that on a listing as a priority.
The things that we need to take community to do is start figuring out what we're gonna do to these trails and paths. The thirty footers would be, would look so cool if they had the ten foot sidewalk, some landscaping, trees and streetlights. That would add a lot to the community.
Yeah, right. But in the meantime, I think the landscaping in front of the building and the flagpole should be a priority, especially with HTD, HGTV coming. So I don't know, Charlotte, if Alex at TWQ can give us a, a design or an estimate or something?
Well, he, he would probably, he would probably do, give us an estimate.
Yeah.
He would be the one I would call to, to check out our irrigation. It was checked out when we first bought the building, but I'm not sure in what condition it's in now. It works? Yeah, so that, that's a plus.
Yeah.
So, yeah. We could get with Ibanez Nursery.
Yeah.
We can get with anybody and have them come up with a plan and a, a cost.
And bring it to a meeting and get approval.
And bring it back to us.
Let's do that.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're working volunteers trying to raise money. We'll never get it done quickly.
Yeah. I'll plant flowers. That's all I have.
Harry, I think you've been trying to address the flowers in front of this building for a long time and I think your issue there is, is the irrigation, is it not?
The irrigation, all the work?
The, the, around the flagpole?
Around the flagpole.
Okay. So you just need money for flowers in order to make that happen? Rachel, do we have some money for flowers for Harry? Harry, get with Rachel. Plant some flowers. Real easy. Let's get this over with. I wanna thank the staff for, sorry, the voice is gone. But for addressing the situation at the graveyard with the hogs. They caught, caught the hog, I guess, and it's much better now. I haven't seen anymore and it seems like it's mitigated nicely. And I swear, I don't know how you keep that cemetery so nice, but you, you do a great job and I appreciate that. And Charlotte, I appreciate the job you're doing as well. Thank you. That's all I have, mayor. Can you imagine?
Deborah?
I agree with Ms. Charles down there, yeah, on everything. The party was great. Everybody was great. A lot of work went into it.
A lot of work went into it. I, I saw what they did for the Christmas parade. You know, they had to trim up all the trees in front of the college to make room for the floats. I didn't think about that. They were out there and they're trimming away and they said, yeah, because when the floats come by, they get all torn up because of the trees. So those little things that we never know that they're doing, I just happened to see that one thing. They take care of us. It's great. And ditto for our new town administrator. She's fabulous. I just want to tell everybody happy new year. I hope yours is a blessed year.
And I, I really appreciate their director reports. And if it's possible, it'd be nice for the people to know how much you really do. Everybody, you know, everybody, 'cause you outlined, you did this and this and this. If you can put it on the website or something, and it's amazing. Let's see, and then as far as landscaping in the town hall, definitely, if, even if you just put down mulch.
And we don't even like mulch.
And I don't like mulch. Wait a minute, wait a minute, did I hear you say mulch?
I'll say that again. Don't even put down mulch.
No pavers? Are you kidding me?
And, and then the last thing is if there's some way that, I think we had kinda talked about a suggestion box or a community feedback place. 'Cause we're trying to, you know, keep, we're doing much better on communications. That'd be one more way. Uh huh.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I wanted to say one more thing. I think a lot of times we see a, a lot of the work that everybody does up here and we forget what Eva does behind the scenes to make all this stuff happen. So Eva, thank you very much for all you do.
And well, she's in the director reports too, so that would become obvious.
While we're talking about landscaping, I would add some sod, maybe bahias, bahias sod to the list. I think the grass is all weeds.
Okay. Anything else come before council? I wanna, again, I say it all the time, I, I think we got the greatest staff in the world. I, I get almost no complaints at all. The only complaint I get is against Rachel and Eva. And, you know, but I address those daily. No, we get along fine. I, I, I appreciate all they do. Again, we got a great staff. We just, we just all gotta work together as a family and that's all I ask of everybody. So if there's nothing else that come before council? Meeting adjourned.